Good evening, everyone.
One more talking.
Back to the old microphone.
Pick up what you're saying.
Whoever that is, can we mute them, please? Again, good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting for Wednesday, January 10, 2024, in the 1820 courtroom at 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Acts of 2023, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Specific information and the general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. First on our agenda this evening, we have administrative notes. We have the minutes of October 25, 2023. Questions, comments from anybody?
Yes, I think I have lots of minutes.
David, I think it's the bottom one, the button. There you go, when it turns green.
I have two typos to correct on page four of these minutes toward the end of the first big paragraph that said David Peck, the control would be, we should add the word said, the control would be the building inspector. And in the next line, Steve Bullockton spoke of regrading Kevin Lynch's concerns should be regarded. So two minor typos to correct.
So this is about excessive long-term. That's why I'm going to. I have, I'll cut it down on this meeting, but I do on the one figure.
Okay, so we have the corrections from David Peck on the minutes from October 25, 2023. Deb, you have those noted? Yes, okay. So with the corrections, I'll entertain a motion.
I move acceptance of the corrected minutes from October 25.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor by show of hands? Unanimous, thank you. Next on the agenda administrative notes, we have the minutes of November 29, 2023. Questions, comments from board members?
I got it. A couple, couple minor typos. On the second page, under staff comments, it says the petitioner and formally withdrew and will now come back, but right before the petitioner, there's some unusual mark next further down, mentioned has a zero after it, and next line down, Aubrey Street, I think, is misspelled. So several minor corrections. Oh, and I believe on the minutes from October 11, I, I think I abstained unless that vote was just to go into executive session, but anyway, I abstained because I was not here October 11.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the November 29 minutes?
I have two comments. Thank you, David, for sharing, because I didn't see this in my packet. One comment I have, and it actually has to do with you, Mr. Bullockton, because it was the staff, under the staff comments, and I'd just like you to verify. I had the same comments as Mr. Peck regarding some of the typos, et cetera, but the comments that you made, Mr. Bullockton, basically, I think it's backwards. So you said that a subdivision would be a better use of the property as opposed to a VOSD, and I think you meant it to be the opposite. Since I have just reviewed the tape, by the way.
That is correct, yes. That is reversed.
Yes, so if you could make those corrections, I think Mr. Bullockton was misrepresented. And I have a second comment, and that is that I asked that my statement to the board be placed in the minutes, verbatim. It was just my email was placed in the packet, which is not included in the minutes, and I would like it included in the minutes so that actually what I said is in the minutes if anybody would like to review the minutes in the future, because otherwise, nothing that I said is part of the minutes. So if you could make that change, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, David.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the minutes from November 29, 2023? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve based on the corrections that were mentioned by the previous two speakers.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor by a show of hands? Aye. That would be unanimous. Next on our administrative notes, we have a lot of minutes that we have to approve. We apologize. We have minutes of December 19, 2023. Comments, questions, corrections on the minutes of December 19, 2023? Seeing none or hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved?
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor by a show of hands, please raise your hand. And abstaining, we have four in favor approving and one abstention on the December 19 minutes. Next on our agenda, we have covenants, plans, and releases. We have B 623 Emerald Business Park Bond Release. Questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in two seconds. All in favor by a show of hands, say aye. Unanimous. Next on our agenda, we have Form A Plan A 486910 Rocky Hill LLC, 10 and 16 Rocky Hill Road, map 43, lot 3A-1 and 4B-1, lot line adjustment to create lots 3A-2 and 4B lot 4B-2. Questions, comments from board members? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion in a second by raising your hand to say aye, yes, approved unanimously. Next, we have Form A Plan A 4870 Nicole A. Laporte, 100 Black Cat Road, map 098, whoever that was, God bless you, map 098, lot 001, 002, 003, lot line adjustment to create lots 42-4 and 42-5. Questions or comments?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor by a show of hands? Unanimous. Okay. Next on our agenda this evening, we have committee appointments. So we have seven applicants this evening for four positions on the master plan committee. So first on the list here, yes, please.
Mr. Chair, just to give the board members a final update, we now have the designees from all of the bodies that are designating to this committee, and they are as follows. Select Board is Kevin Canty, School Board is Robert Morgan, COPC is Mr. Joe Hutchinson, this board, myself, and who am I missing?
Was it the Housing Redevelopment Agency?
Oh, yes, Economic Development is Mr. Rick Veyo. Thank you. That's who it was. So with that in mind, we now have a set of people with certain skill sets and background and information, so I wanted to share that with the board for their consideration in looking for complementary skill sets.
So at the completion of the appointments you have this evening, we'll have a full committee?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, first on the list of applicants on the list this evening is Frank Mann. Frank, would you like to come to the microphone? Not that we don't already know you, obviously. How are you tonight?
I'm good, but you guys look much better from this distance.
I would agree with that, yeah.
So I have a small statement, should I read it, or how would we proceed?
Sure.
So, good evening. My name is Frank Mann. I'm a 40-year resident of Plymouth, and I believe that I am particularly well-qualified to serve on this important committee for two simple reasons. First, my demonstrated long-term commitment to volunteering for a wide variety of committees, boards, and nonprofits, all focused on Plymouth. And second, the relevant skills and experience that I would bring to this effort. I'll break down those skills and experience into three categories: education, professional experience, and volunteerism. In regards to education, I have a BA in English Literature from Boston College, a Master's in Business Administration from Northeastern, and certificates in Professional Communication from Stanford and Web Design and Management from Emerson College. As regards my professional experience, I would note that it is largely comprised of work in the broadly defined communications field, and have included titles such as copywriter, editor, publisher, reporter, and including over a decade covering the town of Plymouth itself. My volunteer in community service included time as the president of the South Plymouth Little League, as a board member of the Plymouth Task Force to End Homelessness, as the organizer of the year-long 365 Sunrise Event, as the creator of Communitree, which is still lit despite the wind out there, as the vice president of the Southeastern Massachusetts Pine Barrens Alliance, a nonprofit conservation group, and as an elected member of both the Charter Commission and the Planning Board. All told, I feel my broad experience in and my demonstrated commitment to this community would make me a valuable member for this important committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Anybody have any questions for Frank?
I have a statement.
Yes, please.
So Frank, you are not unknown to me, and you are not unknown to probably the majority of residents and businesses in Plymouth. And I believe that you bring a unique perspective on many, many issues that are facing Plymouth, and that you are dedicated to those issues. You do your research, and you present those issues in a way that is admirable. And therefore, I would like to see what you bring to the table, stay at the table, because it's often or could be overlooked, and I don't want to see that happen. So I want to thank you for your application, and I'm very happy to see you here tonight, as I'm sure many, many residents of Plymouth are. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions?
Yes, please. Mr. Mann, you are not unknown to me as well. You referenced some of your recent elected positions, and you also ran for another elected position recently, which you were not as successful in, unfortunately for you. But in that process, you have come forth on several occasions and stated that you believe that the future of Plymouth is based upon the rights of nature, that that's a theory, as it were, a doctrine, as it were, that you're espousing and advocating. For those who aren't familiar with the rights of nature, that is a doctrine which in essence says that nature has inherent independent rights that cannot be infringed upon by the residents, and it creates an allowance for any resident to bring suit against the town or a property owner if they believe that those inherent rights are being infringed upon. At least, that's what the website from the individual that you brought to speak to the town says. That's in inherent conflict with a master plan in which the residents decide how they feel land use should occur in Plymouth. So how do you reconcile those two conflicting viewpoints?
Well, as an attorney, you have a specific understanding of the rights of nature that I would say I don't have the expertise in. What I do understand and believe in is that this town specifically has a surfeit, a wealth of natural resources that are undervalued in general traditionally, and in some ways abused and neglected in many other ways. So the rights of nature appeals to me because I believe it is an evolution of law. I believe that 1,000 years ago, we believed wholeheartedly in the world that there were superior races. Most recently, there's been an evolution of thought about animals, especially what we now consider pets and things like that, the rights of animals to not be neglected or abused. In many other instances, the law and our understanding of it evolves as we do, as we grow, and as we, as our lives and our cultures change. So the rights of nature was something that I was willing to entertain and discuss as a member of the Charter Commission, and when there was concern that it was, to use your terms, something that would bring about, you know, some kind of havoc or disarray because everybody would be suing everybody, which I didn't believe, but when there was that concern raised, I raised no objection to its removal from consideration on the I think as well that the question seems to suggest that as a candidate for this position, that I'm one-dimensional, that I'm only interested in conservation or environmental issues. I have an MBA in Business Administration, international business. I have owned my own business and sold it. I operate a business today. I have a perspective as a member of, former member of the Task Force to End Homelessness. I have many other attributes and experiences which I believe give me a broad perspective on the entire community and what would be in its best interest moving forward. But of course, as a member of any group or committee, such as the Charter Committee, I'm someone who would pride myself on being able to communicate with others and understand the direction that others want to take and work toward what would be the best for the If an engineer came onto this committee, I don't think people would criticize the engineer for being biased toward engineering, or an architect toward building, or a banker toward investment. So I have a lot of experience, excuse me, my mouth is getting dry. I have a lot of experience in the local environment. I think it would be a valuable attribute, but I think my broad perspective, intelligence, and ability to work with other people would be probably the greatest strength that I would bring to this committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mann? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on our speaker's list this evening is Thomas Lund. Is Mr. Lund here this evening? Or is he on Zoom?
Yes, I'm on Zoom. How are you this evening?
Good evening, how are you?
Good, thank you very much. I'm just going to get right to the point. Growth in Plymouth and the South Shore is part of life and for the future. Now, I don't see in the short term that it's going to reduce. So with that in mind, I think it's very important that we have oversight on our expansion and growth in Plymouth. With that, my thoughts are this. We need to assess our current situation. In other words, what is our current population? And in that regard, the classifications: single-family, multifamily, apartments, condo, et cetera. Then, I think we need to go to every department in Plymouth: sanitary, water, police, fire, social services, schools, medical, water, traffic, public works, and determine what our current assets are. And I believe we need to look at the past five to seven years of history and analyze where the growth in Plymouth has come from. By doing this, we will have created a baseline for us. So as we look to the future and to the growth in our community, we can ascertain the trends of what has happened in the past five or seven years and formulate a potential plan for future growth. So that in assessing our current asset situation, as an example, there's going to be three classifications: it's going to be a deficit of asset, it's going to be a surplus of asset, and it's going to be per plan. So I think it's important, as we look to the future, we need to look at possibly one year, three year, five year, 10 year, whatever it may be, plan based upon some basic levels. In other words, if we know what our basic guideline is at this point in time, when we reach a certain point in relationship to population growth, we should have a plan as to where our assets should be. So as we, as projects are presented to the board for approval, we should analyze where we are in regards to our assets. So if a plan is presented to the board for approval, and everything is per plan, then it would be a very simple approval. If we are of a deficit or a surplus, then I believe it's important for the board to know where we stand and how to assess the developer as to contributing to a deficit so that as we grow, we can keep the community at the same level as far as services go.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Any questions? Any questions from board members from Mr. Lund?
Yes, please.
Please.
So forgive my ignorance, Mr. Lund, I'm not really familiar with you, so could you give me a little bit of background of who you are in a community, what you've, what you, what you've done, your business, businesses, or things like that?
Certainly, certainly. I grew up in upstate New York, and I moved to the South Shore in 2000, so I've been here for 24 years. I've been in Plymouth for the past 11 to 12 years. I've, my background is design and construction. I've worked for a developer out of Syracuse, I worked in architectural firms, I worked for a music retailer in Albany, New York, I worked for Talbot's as director of construction, I worked for Yankee Candle for directors, store planning and construction, and I worked for Staples as a construction project manager.
So what particular skills do you think you're going to bring to the master plan committee, task force?
My experience is such that my concern is to equate growth to the community and to maintaining services. So when I was with the Pyramid Companies, which was a mall developer in Syracuse, I was exposed to quite a bit of expansion and working with communities. As an example, they built the Independence Mall in Kingston, Massachusetts back in the late 70s, or 80s. So I believe that from a construction and planning perspective, my experience will bring quite a bit to the table.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
You're welcome.
A quick one. It's a very impressive resume you have, so thank you for applying. What is your availability? I mean, if you're, if you're still working and frequently traveling for Staples, who you now work for, would you be available for the meetings that this committee is going to have to have over the next two years?
Yes, I will be available. My work, my workload is such that it allows me to be in town and will not be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions from members at all from Mr. Lund? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Next on the list of candidates or applicants is Kathy, and I hope I pronounce this right, Kostagna. Is that correct, I hope?
Good evening, yes, Kostania.
Okay, thank you. How are you tonight?
I'm good, and nice to see you all.
Thank you very much for applying, everybody who's applied. Thank you.
Okay, so I am, I was a former member of the Master Plan Task Force. I spent two years with our, with our task force, and at that point in time, our, our charge was to provide a gap analysis from the current Plymouth master plan, what worked and what didn't work. And in that capacity, we interviewed a variety of stakeholders around the town in different areas, and we also had assistance from the Old Colony Planning Council, and we developed a draft scope of work for the new master plan. So I'm very familiar, I spent two years as a dedicated member of the Master Plan Task Force. I have a background in a master's degree from Tufts University in urban and environmental policy and planning. I have a bachelor's degree in geology. I had, I have a 37-year career at the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency in a variety of roles. My most recent position before I retired was to work, working in the Brownfields Program, working with communities that were looking to remediate and restore formerly abandoned properties, particularly in line with their, their own master plans or their comprehensive economic development plans. I also have experience in procuring contractors. I worked on several technical evaluation panels. We developed RFPs, interviewed consultants, and then oversaw the work of the consultants for the agency. I also have significant experience in community engagement because one of my jobs at EPA during my tenure there was as the environmental justice coordinator, and I worked with a variety of nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations, and individual citizens to address some of their environmental concerns as it related to EPA activities. So I think I bring a lot to the table as far as my professional background, as far as my volunteerism. I am the vice chair of the Center for Active Living's Advisory Board. I've been on the advisory board as a member, and I've been serving as the last year as the vice chair, and that is our, basically, our town's senior center. And I'm also a member of the Plymouth Senior Task Force, and we're in the middle of developing a strategy to have Plymouth designated as an age and dementia-friendly community. We've just finished a very comprehensive community needs assessment for the senior population in town. So I bring a fair amount of skill sets to the table, and particularly because So I bring a fair amount of skill sets to the table, and particularly because I've spent over two years on the Master Plan Task Force, I really would like to continue the work that we've started. I know part of the tasks that we'll be looking at are selecting a professional planning consulting team, and I have lots of experience with that, assisting in the engagement of the community, and I'm fairly familiar with that, and a, a large proponent of, of community, active community involvement. This is a community plan. It's the vision for the town, and we need to, it's imperative that we hear from all sectors of the town. And I have skills in drafting master plans and helping to review documents and such. So I feel like I bring a strong suit of skills to the table. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions for Kathy from the board? Yes, Ms. Keen, please.
Thank you, Mr. Brandy. So this is mainly a statement. I myself have spent about 30 years as an executive and many years as a consultant. And one of the things that I learned about successful teams is that there has to be some continuity. And what you bring to the table is basically historic knowledge and continuity, and that is one of the most valuable contributions besides your skills, Kathy. And then, so I want to thank you very much for putting your hat into the ring for the Master Plan Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keen. Any other questions for Kathy from board members? Seeing it on, thank you very much, Kathy. Okay, next applicant this evening is Peter. Again, I apologize if I don't pronounce the last name correctly. Savan? I hope that was correct. If not, please correct me. How are you tonight?
That is correct.
Oh, thank you.
It's Scandinavian. Mr. Chairman and the committee members, I appreciate the opportunity. I sent in a short resume of my areas of expertise and things that I've accomplished over my lifetime. I have retired, so I have time to devote to an activity like this. I believe that, you know, I served in town meeting in Plymouth for six years. I was active with discussions with, on some capital projects and finance issues and things. So I have a deep interest in seeing the success of this town and the town move forward as it grows. And I have prior experience of town meeting member in Winchester, Mass. I was a finance advisory committee there, member there for several years, chaired some committees and things at that point. So I have a fairly good exposure, and my primary business was lending money to governments. So I've worked with town finance officials and boards and things for many years and to sort of have, I think, good insight into that. But having said that, I think a fresh approach is needed to our master planning. I appreciate the fact that town meeting has budgeted money, and you have monies set aside to hire a professional consultant. And our job as a committee is to help guide them, listen to them, but use their expertise in where they've served other communities in developing plans. So we need to take advantage of that. I believe the plan, a lot, a lot of effort has been spent on prior plans and things. I think to a certain extent, they're aspirational. I think a plan needs to be a little more focused with specific outcomes and sit down with various departments and the community in terms of what it is we desire people to do, and so that they're held accountable for that. So we need some accountability measures, I believe. I think the, you know, I mentioned in my letter, there are several trends in Plymouth which I don't think are healthy. Everybody talks about the need for economic growth, yet the fact is, our economic tax base, industrial manufacturing, is actually less now than it was 10 years ago, and it's significantly less than it was 15 years ago. So we're going in the wrong direction in that regard. And the role of a committee is to design sort of, not do necessarily the work, but to guide people, like our economic development, to how can we identify properties? How can we bring them more shuttle-ready, so to speak, so that when people are interested, they, they can come to Plymouth? You know, there's a great expansion of the medical community. A lot of, you know, downtown Bos, Boston Cambridge is developing. That's spreading to the suburbs. There's no reason we can't have sites ready for good, you know, research and laboratories and things in Plymouth. So that's what I think some focus needs to be on. I think, you know, aside from the lack of growth of industrial, you know, the Red Brook Development, Pine Hills Development have contributed significantly to net revenues to the town. And while those will continue, the growth in those revenues is going to stop pretty soon. Pine Hills will be built out, Red Brook's a little behind that in getting there. So all of that and the loss of revenues from the nuclear plant are going to be factors that fit into this as well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody have any questions?
Nope.
Thank you very much for coming this evening, sir. Okay, next is, is Therese Wareham online yet? She is not. Okay. Next applicant for this evening is Arthur. Again, I apologize. Desloges. Are you here this evening? Yes. I hope I pronounced it right.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, sir. How are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Great, sir.
Here, okay?
Yes.
Good evening to members of the committee and all the community members that are attending Thank you for considering my application for this position. To start?
Yes.
My wife and I fell in love with Plymouth 14 years ago. We moved here for the same reasons most people thoroughly enjoy it, the open space, the community, the neighbors, the way we get around, and the way we treat each other as brothers and sisters. One of my core values is to serve the community. I do that because of our lived experience, and I'm totally committed to Plymouth and to all of the Commonwealth. In addition to that value, I believe in livable communities. Livable communities has many, many elements. It's a matter of preservation, conservation, smart development, balancing environmental concerns, commercial growth, and the voice of citizens and the culture in which we live. For my background, I have a master, MBA from Boston College, a degree from the Fletcher School, and a graduate degree in international diplomacy, and I'm currently a candidate for a master's degree at Tufts University in environmental and urban planning. I was a corporate executive for more than 30 years for a Fortune 500 company. The skills I learned were strategic planning, making sure that everybody is aware of what our goals, our missions is, and how they individually contribute to it. Most important is to ensure that the many diverse members of whether it's a community or a corporation all have their voice heard and participate in the direction in which we go in. And importantly, as a corporate, as a business person, to get the job done. As part of my value of civic commitment, I bring to the table here my face-to-face interaction with many, many citizens of Plymouth every day who face living, what are the issues of living in Plymouth? What are the challenges? And what do we do as a community? I am a board member of the League of Women Voters, where I participate, just have finished participating, in a major effort, which is a get out the vote effort for upcoming January 13th election. As a town meeting member, I regularly hold listening sessions for all members of our precinct and for all members of the town, where we engage on the issues of the day, and what is facing the town, and what we should do as a group to move forward. I am a board member of the Plymouth Antiquarian Society, and I just helped finish their strategic plan. And their value of what do they bring to Plymouth by bringing the historical perspective. I'm a member of No Place for Hate, where I participate in publicity and public outreach. As part of my lived experience, I am very connected and with mental health crisis we have in the United, right here in Plymouth, in the Massachusetts. So I am a board member of the Child and Family Services, which operates a walk-in center right here in Industrial Park, and will soon be spearheading a publicity effort in Plymouth so people are aware of our walk-in services and crisis response unit. I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, where I participate in their outreach activities. I am a core environmentalist. I am on the Town Citizens Net Advisory Group, where we are building a strategic plan and a roadmap for a green new Plymouth. The point of all that is not that I'm on committees or I'm on boards. The point is I actively work on these boards, on things for the benefit of Plymouth and the citizens. And I'm face-to-face, and I'm listening to what all of these people are saying, trying to balance their concerns in day-to-day life. So what I bring, will bring to this committee is their views. What do they want? What are their aspirations? What are their values? And with all, all the efforts needed to make a good master plan, it's blending all these things together. Because a good master plan is one we don't need to say, you have to follow it. It's one that all of these groups and all the town committees will say, we want to follow that master plan. Because they've bought into it, because it reflects their vision and aspiration of where we want to go. And that's where I think I can contribute to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions? Yes, Steve, please.
I'm keeping this thing until it works. There we go. Thank you. Mr. Desloges. Certainly, no one can challenge your commitment to the community. You're involved in many things, and, and the community is the better for it. But I also noted one thing that you didn't list, that you're currently a candidate for state representative. And that's a very big commitment, commitment that certainly would compete with the Master Plan Committee, especially if elected, probably eliminate you from consideration of a number of events and meetings, not to mention the political considerations that obviously go with that. How do you reconcile running for state office while at the same time saying that you're going to be focused on the needs of what this particular group in Plymouth wants you to accomplish?
Sure. Thank you. Very important question. And I do plan to win. I think they're synergistic. I am running for state representative, and I will run in the primary, I'll win that, and I'll go on for the general election. But the core values I have of service to the community and fighting for Plymouth every day, whether it's right here or on Beacon Hill, are the same issues and the same values. It's the same people who want to be able to make sure we have good schools, right? Make sure we have affordable living, make, make sure our community is livable. What are we going to do with the environment? I don't see any, they're the same issues that, that are going to be faced, so my contribution in education, I think, is the same. In terms of time, Mr. Ballotin, again, I will have enough time to work on this committee. I think it is synergistic with many of the other things I will do. When I'm doing these other events and board member things, I'm listening to what the people of Plymouth are saying. That's what I hope to bring to the committee. So I don't, I don't see, I, I will not have an issue with time management. I don't know the rules. If I win, what has to happen? And I will leave that to the, the regulators who say what is necessary. I do not know if I would need to step down. I might, I don't know.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Yes, please.
So, Mr. Desloges, I have to say that in your caucus and your listening sessions, I believe that you're unique in many respects from most of the caucus chairs, that you do listen almost on a daily basis to the residents of Plymouth, actually more so than anybody else that I know. And I do want to say that I have sat on some very labor-intensive committees with our current state rep, Matt Moratori, and I don't feel that he has let me down in many respects as our rep or on the committees with whom, with which I sit, with him. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're very welcome. Anyone else have any questions? If not, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Robin, is Therese Wareham online? Still not online. Okay, next candidate this evening, we have Tara Calori. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Okay. So I've been a resident in Plymouth for 22 years. I've gone through the Plymouth Public School System, played youth sports here, went off to college at King State, got an undergrad at Business Administration, and went off to get a dual master's degree at Northeastern for accounting and an MBA. I currently work for National Grid as a finance business partner, daily working on capital projects, reviewing the budgets, materials, relaying messages to all the stakeholders if anything's going wrong, and getting them back on track. After listening to other candidates today, obviously, I'm clearly the youngest one here. I think I represent a demographic that's not traditionally heard, and I think it's very important for the master plan to be on and get our voice out there. I think we're the future stake of the town of Plymouth, and it's important for us to have a say in what's going on. And the master plan should be a very good balance of kind of, you know, using the mandated laws that we have, as well as listening to our residents. And I think that's going to be important for us carrying out future plans.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions for Tara Calori?
David, yes.
I'll ask the same question. Do your job requirements allow you to dedicate enough time to this potential responsibility?
Yeah, so I currently work from home, so I have plenty of time to kind of work around my own schedule. And, you know, everyone I work with understands that I'm doing this. So if something comes up, you know, they're very flexible if I need to make time for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is Therese Wareham online yet? She is not. But we do have her submittal in our packet. So if she can't make it, then obviously I want to move on with making the appointments. If she's not here, it's kind of hard to have her speak, so obviously. But first and foremost, I'd like to thank all the applicants for applying to this very important committee. It's a very important committee for the town of Plymouth as far as the master plan and guidelines across our community. And I'm very appreciative of all the volunteers that actually apply for every position, for every position in any committee in the entire town. So again, if you don't get appointed this evening, please continue to participate. I'm sure you will. Some of you have served on different committees and boards and different towns and in the town of Plymouth, which we can't function without volunteers, right, here in our town? So it's very important. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to go through individually, one member at a time. Each planning board member has, yes, David?
Before we start, is the appointment for just one year or two?
It's a, it's two-year.
Full term of the committee?
Full term for the committee.
Okay, it's just, you know, the, you know, the initial worksheet said it expires in 2025.
It's two-year term. Okay? That's another miss, what?
It's now 2024.
I understand. So when the committee starts, it will go for two years, from my understanding.
I think the way that we have set up, we will go until we're completed. Our expectation is two years, but the, the point was that this committee will continue until it finishes its work, until we have a master plan.
And I just wanted to make sure whoever we're appointing understands it's two years-ish, you know, what's it, where it's.
It's a minimum, minimum of two years.
Until we're done.
And it may be more. So everyone should understand that. Right? Okay. So again, I'm going to say every planning board member here this evening, because there are four people that will get appointed this evening, has one, two, three, four yes votes. So I'm going to go through each individual person and I will ask the planning board members to raise their hand if they're voting yes for the person that I asked to vote for. So first, I'm going to ask for any hands for Frank Mann. Okay. Okay, next I will go to Thomas Lund. Do we have any yeses for Mr. Lund? Seeing none, I will move on to Kathy Castagna. Remember, you only have four votes, so if you, I'll pay attention.
That's it, unanimous.
So it's unanimous on Kathy Castagna. All five. Next on the list here, we have Peter Savan. All in favor of Mr. Savan, please raise your hand. We have three. Okay. Next on our list, we have Therese Wareham. All in favor of Therese Wareham, please raise your hand. Okay, that's two. Steve and myself. Okay. All in favor of Arthur Dislogius, please raise your hand. Okay. Okay. Next on our list, we have Tara Calori. All in favor of Tara Calori, please raise your hand. That's all five. Two, three, five. Okay, so right now we have two appointments, which we confirmed would be Tara Calori and Kathy Castagna. And we have.
Two tied.
Two tied with three. Therese received two. So of the two tied with, tied with three, we should be appointing.
Both of them.
Both of them, because they have the votes. So that would be Mr. Dislogius and Peter Savan. Do we have that written down, please? Yes?
Yes, that's correct.
That is correct. Everyone else who did not get appointed this evening, again, my apologies. I've been out there with you being, trying to get on committees and not getting appointed in my younger days, and I appreciate everything and all the, all the applicants that came here this evening. Thank you very much. And for the people that were appointed, I believe you need to be sworn in at the town clerk's office, so make sure you do that with the town clerk, please. All right? Congratulations and thank everyone who came here for the appointments. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have a presentation by Redbrook Caesar Senior Housing Affordable Project. There is no vote happening here this evening. This is strictly a presentation to let everybody know what the future plans are and how this would work for the town of Plymouth with the presenters here this evening. So please, sir, good evening and thank you.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Walter Rohanian and I am the Managing Director of the Grantham Group and I'm joined here today by our Director of Development, Michael Cucchiara. I appreciate the various committee members, town staff and town residents allowing me to discuss Cranberry Commons, a 52-unit affordable housing community for people 62-plus. And I did just want to start off by apologizing to anyone here today joining us from Redbrook Community. As in our meeting on Monday, I did mention that the project was only for people 62-plus, but I did want to clarify that as an affordable deed-restricted housing community, it's also available to someone with a disability. Besides Mike and I speaking about the project today, I've invited a few people to help me present. First, I'll be inviting Dan from AD Makepeace, an a Plymouth town resident, to give you an overview of Redbrook, local supporting initiatives that we've done, and give an overview of the land's current existing conditions. After that, I'll get back up. I'm going to give you an overview of Grantham Group and how we can develop these types of affordable projects, and I'll review the specifics of the project itself. Once that is done, I'll be introducing Clay Smook, who is our architect, and he'll give you the design of the project and how it fits into both Redbrook and how it also fits on the site. We'll finish off with any questions that the group may have after our presentation. So first, let me ask Dan to come up and speak. Thank you.
What happened?
Don't make fun of me.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff, the audience here tonight. Thank you for taking the time. For those that don't know, I just wanted to give a brief overview just about Redbrook in general as it specifically relates to the master plan.
Excuse me, Dan, could you pull that microphone closer to you so?
Sure. Is that better?
That's better, a lot better.
So just wanted to give a quick overview of Redbrook as it relates to affordable housing and then also just some public initiatives from the town themselves. So for those that don't know, master, the master plan special permit for Redbrook was issued in 2008.
Where is the cursor? Oh, now I just messed something up now. Oh. All right, this is the first slide. Do I click a button or do I just scroll? But I don't see. When I scroll, it doesn't do anything. Oh, there it goes. It happened there. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. So the master plan special permit for Redbrook was issued in 2008. And just to read a quick blurb from the permit, it's to allow an alternative form of land use development consistent with design principles of traditional neighborhoods and village by creating a variety of different transitional neighborhoods and small-scale downtown village achieves a diverse, a diverse variety of land uses, ranging from single-family homes, townhomes, apartments, restaurants, community facilities, and active and passive open space with close proximity to one another. From a full affordable housing perspective, the master plan special permit and the MOU always contemplated a large affordable component of assisted living. And to achieve something at that level with assisted living, it would require private land donations, state funding and tax credits, municipal funding. However, due to market conditions changes with federal tax laws and policies and such from early to federal funding, that's not a viable option at the moment. This is super sensitive. So just a quick overview of the permit itself as it relates to affordable housing. We use the Transfer Development Rights Bylaw for this project and we anticipate it's using 736 TDRs. To date, we've used 371, or at least has been permitted through the use area process, which would have equated to 74 required affordable housing units. The company at the time when the permit was issued agreed to go above and beyond to do 103, and approximately 50% of those would have been from an afforded, affordable assisted living community. And the required AMI, I believe, is up to 80%, 70 to 80%. The total is always contemplated, again, a large component, about 50% of those units to be the assisted living. And because of what I've mentioned earlier, the Grantham Group has proposed a senior affordable housing community. If the Grantham project goes forward, that would be a total of 52 units, all 100% counting as income restricted, and Walter will go into more of those specifics. There's an existing 15 units on site now. There's 10 that are in progress in existing neighborhoods. That would be a total of 77 units, 75% of the commitment. The remaining affordable may be done in using a variety of methods that are referenced in the MOU and ultimately by our granting authority, the planning board. Just want to take a quick moment to go over things that are in the town's existing documentation, supporting documentation initiatives, specifically the current master plan and the affordable housing plan. I won't read all of them, but I think it's important for everyone to see them, but I'll just read a couple of them. Creating a sense of community, create and build upon village centers, improving quality life, promote and support a diversified housing portfolio, and guide growth in areas with existing services, roadways, walkways, water, sewer, and encourage construction of housing which is less costly to service than single-family residents on larger lots. That's coming from the current master plan. And then from the affordable housing plan, there's a couple of things I just want to touch on. Encourage the production of all, encourage the production of affordable housing. Utilize zoning regulation and incentives to facilitate private sector production of affordable housing. Integrate new affordable housing into existing communities. Support the production of affordable housing which is in contextual in design and which has a quality of construction compatible with market rate units. There's been recent discussions over the last couple of years in the town, as we all understand, that 80% of the AMI, which is the required affordability, when you look at the numbers, just isn't truly that affordable. And so the recent requests and conversations have about how do we lower that 80% to down as low as to 60% or so? And then also about creating affordable housing for Plymouth, but that the town of Plymouth itself does not own or maintain. This is just coming from a couple of departments or affiliations that are on the website. We have the Plymouth Housing Authority mission, I won't read the whole thing, but again, to provide quality, affordable and safe housing to eligible persons in the community with a demonstrated need and to foster and encourage opportunities for independent and self-sufficiency for all clients with integrity and respect for the diversity of our community. And then the Center for Active Living mission, to provide our community with a safe, trusted physical and virtual environment where information and access to programs and services foster a healthy and vital lifestyle throughout the aging process. Before we hand it back over to Walter, I just want to touch on the existing condition site for those that aren't familiar with Redbrook. If you position yourself at the meeting house, this is directly to the north of the meeting house, right behind it. It's bounded by Wareham Road, Sunflower Way, Green Sideway North and Green Sideway South. As of today, there's an existing gravel and small paved parking area. There's a construction trailer that we use at times for ourselves and then also for a small meeting space for residents. There is a community playground which will be relocated, a small wooded area and an existing dumpster enclosure for trash and recycling. And with that, I would like to turn it over back to Walter.
Thanks, Dan, I appreciate that. So Grantham is a Massachusetts-based developer and management agent of affordable housing. We not only develop our projects, but after those projects are built, we're also the management agency. So we're in these projects every day, 365 days a year. In addition, between all the communities that we have developed, there are nearly 600 employees throughout all those companies. Our company started back in the 90s when the city of Worcester was going to close a nursing home it had owned and operated for over 100 years called the Belmont Home. The city realized that there was no reason for a city to be in a nursing home business anymore and was ready to close the nursing home and send all of its residents to various nursing homes throughout Worcester County and lay off most of its staff. We had heard about this and we were able to develop a brand-new state-of-the-art nursing home called Christopher House. As a company, one of the asks that we had to the city of Worcester was that we have enough land set aside to be able to build an affordable housing community. In this case, it happened to be an assisted living community. And we were able to do that through federal low-income housing tax credits. So you may ask yourself, well, what is that? Back in the Reagan administration in the 80s, they realized that the current affordable housing stock was aging all across the country, just like it was in the city of Worcester. Local and federal government wasn't able to build affordable housing, so these federal tax credits were created to encourage private sector investment on new rental affordable housing. This is the way we've built all of our housing, affordable housing projects in Massachusetts, whether it be Christopher Heights of Worcester, which is an affordable assisted living we opened in May of 1997, or our senior housing project in Situate, which I'll discuss a bit more in a bit. In the early days, the federal tax credits were enough of a resource to be able to build affordable housing. But as construction costs, both materials and labor have skyrocketed, unfortunately these, there aren't enough credits to be able to make the projects work. So state and local governments are now asked to put funds into a project to help get these projects developed. Most likely, one of the reasons why many cities and towns like Plymouth have their own affordable housing trust and a community preservation committee so they too can support the development of affordable housing in town. We have developed all of our projects with the help of many agencies, whether they be various towns, cities, or government agencies such as Mass Development and Mass Housing. We've worked with them. Back before COVID, we were very fortunate during the Baker administration, we're the recipient of a governor's citation for affordable housing development work. We're appreciative of the state's recognition of our projects. So this here is a project that we, we completed in 2021. It's a senior housing project in Situate. There we go. It was completed in '21, which was during the height of COVID. It came in actually under budget and ahead of schedule. As everyone probably recalls, we had a lot of supply chain issues and we were fortunate enough that we were able to develop that project on time and under budget. Grantham received $2.5 million from the Situate CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust Funds from Situate, which is about $84,000 per unit. It offers deep affordability. It's 30 units. There are some units at 30% and some units at 60% of the area median income. What we've learned is 95% of those residents that live at Lawson Green are actually from Situate, which is exactly what we'd anticipate happening here in Plymouth. Some of those residents may be people who can no longer afford to stay in their own private, single-family home, or it could be a loved one that you know that maybe can't afford their rental community that they're in, or someone maybe you want to bring into town and someone to be able to help. Unfortunately, with most affordable housing, it's never enough. When we opened up this community, there were over 1,000 lottery entrants, 1,000 of them for 30 units. Today, there's a current waitlist of over 250 people for that project. So like I mentioned, I'm going to have Clay, the architect, kind of give you an idea exactly what the outside of the building will look like and how you'll see it from the outside, but I did just want to kind of show you what the inside looks like. We talk about affordable housing, but we really build it so it makes it look like it's market rate housing as well. As you can see, it has a beautiful kitchen, nice flooring that's there, a beautiful living room area. It has an easy access shower and bathroom system for the resident as well. They do their, all their own cooking, they do all their own cleaning. Everything that they need to do can be done individually in that apartment. They're all one-bedroom units. In addition to the apartments themselves that are in the building, there's also some common space. As you can see on the top left-hand side, we have a beautiful living room area for the residents to be able to enjoy and mingle with each other together once they come outside of their apartment. On the lower-left side, you'll see a great community room for the residents that they can enjoy, whether it be a simple activity session that they're having, like doing puzzles, maybe they want to run their own bingo session, maybe they want a community meal with each other. And then on the lower-right, as you walk into the building, a nice lobby area that we have as people may come in and wait for tours. we have, as people may come in and wait for tours. So Cranbury Commons at Red Brook will be fifty-two total units, all one-bedroom, and a hundred percent will be income restricted. The lion's share, over eighty percent of the units, will be at sixty percent or below the area median income. All fifty-two units will count towards the town's subsidized housing inventory, in which will hopefully help the town get closer to meeting its ten percent forty B requirements. What we do anticipate happening is when the select board, the Board of Selectmen look at this project, they may ask for a local preference. And so during the initial lottery process, seventy percent of the units could actually be allotted for residents of Plymouth. We also put a little bullet point in there which calls allows for aging in place. As residents get older, we actually, besides a leasing agent that's in the project, it's also a slash social worker. It's someone who's in that project twenty hours a week. There is not a lot of turnover in those units. In the assisted living, we might turn over forty percent of our residents a year. In a senior affordable housing project, you may have one or two units that open up a year. So this leasing agent slash social worker will also help set up things such as a COVID clinic, flu clinics, help with getting residents dialer rides, help with them setting up a doctor's appointment, various things that they can help the residents with, and then also engage in some of the activities with the residents as well, get them to enjoy, to be able to enjoy a community meal or an activity. So the project support, we were fortunate enough when we did meet with AD Makepeace, we had mentioned to them, to build housing is expensive. They were willing and able to donate the land to this project, a value of nearly two million dollars. Community support, we're looking for, in which the CPC voted in favor of, in which will eventually go to town meeting, is a four million dollar request through the Community Preservation Committee. In addition, we're going to be providing an application to the Affordable Housing Trust for a half a million dollars. So the total request is about four and a half million dollars, which is around eighty-six thousand dollars per unit. And if you look back to what we just recently did in Situate back in two thousand and eighteen, they were about eighty-four thousand dollars per unit. And we all know what has happened with cost between two thousand and eighteen and twenty-three, so an eighty-six thousand dollar per unit request is reasonable. One of the things that I wanted to discuss is just, you know, what does a project like this cost? This is a twenty-five million dollar project. From the state, we're looking for them to award us nearly fifteen and a half million dollars worth of tax credits in various debt services that they have. From the town, like we discussed, approximately four point five million dollars between the CPC and the trust. In addition, the project's going to take on its own debt, five million dollars worth of debt, a million of it which will be about a divert fee, and four million of it will be a loan and a mortgage for the project itself. I'd like to go ahead and invite Clay Smookup, the architect, and have him show you the project from the outside. Thank you.
How are you?
Good evening. My name is Clay Smook. I'm an architect. I've been a registered architect in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since nineteen eighty-nine. Actually, my introduction to Plymouth was in nineteen ninety. I was working for another firm in a, in a capacity, and we were working on a Main Street and facade improvement program back in the day. I founded my firm, Smook Architecture and Urban Design, twenty years ago, and have done some significant buildings, I believe, in Plymouth. I have some wonderful clients here, and I'm really thrilled today to be talking about two clients, longstanding clients of mine, the Grantham Group, who I've been working with since two thousand and five, and AD Makepeace, who I've been working with for the last ten years. So up on the screen are two projects that my firm designed for the Grantham Group. The first project actually is on the right. It is an assisted, an eighty-three-bed assisted living facility. It's actually in Marlborough, Massachusetts, on an old brown field site that used to be occupied by the Fryboot Factory that was conveyed by an RFP to, through an RFP process to the Grantham Group. The Grantham Group at that time had several other locations of Christopher Height buildings. They asked me to come. They wanted to create a very distinct branded look for it, and this is, this is the inside of the cloister there. On the left, as Walter indicated, this was another project that I believe was put out through an RFP process, sort of a competition. We worked with the Grantham Group to develop this project in Situate. Again, they're all one-bedroom units. There you go. Other projects in Plymouth that I've done, I believe I've been before this board on a project that's not up here, which is the Cape Cod Five Bank on Commerce, which is due to open in four weeks. These are projects all, and I've done many, many more, luckily to have worked at the Pine Hills over many, many years, over the last couple of decades. This is an example of some of the buildings that we've done. We've learned so much working at the Pine Hills about the scale of vernacular New England architecture, and we're going to bring that, those skills of planning and architecture to this project. So I just wanted to touch upon the townhouses, because this is kind of an interesting story too. These were developed by Whitman Homes, and I had actually been asked by Whitman Homes, Bart O'Brien, to assist with the concept development of these buildings. So it's, I think it's kind of interesting that the building that we're proposing is directly across from it. I want to talk a little bit about these buildings. What's unique about these buildings is they are very, very vertical. Most, if you were to go look at most of Whitman Homes projects, the roofs tend to be much more of a gentle slope. We actually used a much steeper slope here because the intent was to make these buildings appear almost as if they're three stories. So the peak of those buildings are between thirty-one and thirty-two feet off grade, depending on where the measurement is taken. Obviously, the grade changes. Coming to our project, you know, I think an important part of this, in my practice of architecture, is really, again, and that's why it's part of the name of my firm, which is urban design, is to really look about how projects fit within a town or within a city. I think it's really important. So this is sort of the ten, you know, the ten-thousand-foot approach, looking down. Our project is sort of dead center. It's a, it's sort of an upside-down L that's right below the label that says Sunflower Way. But when you look at the footprint of this building, you see that it sort of works with the grain of the city. It's not a very large complex of buildings. I think if you were to compare the footprint of this building, in other words, the outline of the building, up to the Red Brook Apartments, above on the top right at one o'clock, you'd see that it's a fairly small footprint, all things considered. As we zoom in, I think it's important to look at the importance of this building. First of all, retaining the corner. It's sitting on Sunflower Way, which, the scale of that road is almost boulevard-like, and we'll get to the dimension of that road and why creating a strong piece of architecture with a strong, what's called, street wall is important. But we decided that the entry to the building should be off Wareham Road, and that would have some perpendicular spaces for parking. And we had similar perpendicular parking spaces on Sunflower Way, but after really looking at it, we decided, you know what, let's turn those spaces parallel to the path of travel, and that would give us a greater buffer zone of plantings, mature trees, and lower shrubs between the building and this curb edge. Here we are, moving in a little bit closer. You know, so much of, so much of urban design, you know, people talk a lot about the buildings, but so much of urban design is what happens between the curb line and the face of the building. And I think we see a lot of that in really, in retail projects. For example, in a hang-on Derby Street shops, where they spent a lot of time thinking about the landscape between the street and the building facade. But again, looking at this, inside of that, you see that sort of reverse L I felt to talk about, there is some surface parking that's held within that, within the property. So, the floor plan, pretty straightforward. It's a double-loaded corridor. Again, what's really interesting is these are all one-bedroom units. We're going to have one or two people in those buildings. These are not one or two occupants in each of those units. These are not two bedrooms. These are not three bedrooms. You're not going to have whole families in here. The other thing about the Grantham Group, which is really quite admirable, is all of the units, the level of finish is in all of the units, no matter what you're paying, whether you're paying a hundred percent, sixty percent, or thirty percent, the interior finish, they are identical. So this is sort of a broad section, looking at the elevation. So way on the, almost to the floor that's left is the meeting house. Then you've got our building, which is a three-story building with a series of hats on it. And I think it's important to think about that, and I'll explain why we sort of decided to do this rather than have a flat building. Then you've got the Sunflower Way, Right of Way, Easement, and Traffic, and then across the street, of course, you have the townhouses. So I want to zoom in on this a little bit, give you some heights to sort of work off of. So as I said, you know, the top of the townhouses are in the neighborhood of thirty-one, thirty-two feet tall. Now, these are buildings, if you would just make this a flat building, the top of the parapet at the, at the upper floor is thirty-two feet, so it practically matches exactly that peak height of the townhouses across the street. And what we've actually done is we've, on the corner where Wareham Road and Sunflower Way meet, we've actually dropped the scale of that building down to a two-story building with a shed roof that angles back into the building. And then, of course, we have these hats. And one of the reasons we felt it was important to do that is really, really stitching the architecture of this, of these buildings into the, into the whole story of New England architecture, that it just felt appropriate that these buildings had those sorts of hats. And, and, and they're not just parapits. They're, as you can see from beyond, they're on the, on the left, where you see the building, they're actually fairly substantial. And these things actually have a dual role, not only aesthetic, but to actually act as visual screens for any mechanical on the roof. So I think it's important, one of the things that's important to see here is the, is the space between the face of those two buildings. It's significant, and we're going to have another slide that's really going to show even in more detail what that means. But from facade to facade is approximately eighty feet. So you've got the, you've got the active roadway, you've got a strong buff parking, buffer zone, mature trees. So this is the elevation that would be facing the townhouses on Sunflower Way. Again, you see sort of the three-story, I like to call it sort of a short stack of pancakes with the, with the hats on top of it. And then when you go to the perspective of this, this gives a little bit more perspective of the, of the scale of how far across the road that is. Again, eighty feet, face of building to face of building, and a substantial buffer zone along the parking on our side, that parallel parking. And we have an example, because it's all fine and good to look at this, but then we have this example further down, down Wareham Road, which shows exactly the scale of those townhouses. This is a little bit more, but it's a good example, because it's one thing to see drawings, it's a whole different thing to see this. So this shows ninety-five feet facade to facade. Ours is a little tighter. Ours is eighty feet facade, facade. But you can see, there's no, there's no encroaching on light and air to that, to the, to the roadway, to the right of way, to the walks, and especially to the townhouses across the road. So thank you for giving the opportunity to review the architecture, and I'll be here if you have any questions, any further questions.
I just want to go over a couple of things as it relates to the Red Brook community itself. We did hold a resident meeting on Monday, just to give them an opportunity to hear essentially the identical presentation as this one, but then to allow them to ask questions that are more geared towards their community specific, not necessarily this forum. There are a few matters I just want to point out. Again, this, it's next to a community, there's a community playground on the existing site that's not being destroyed, it's being relocated. We're tasking our current advisory committee, along with our medities committee, to come up with some locations that are best suited. I know us as a declarant do make that decision, but we want their input. I'm, for one, my opinion would be to have maybe two or three locations with developed playgrounds without, within the community, rather than have one central one, but that's ultimately my opinion. So I look forward to working with those folks to do that. There's also a community garden there, and there are impacts on the, there are concerns about impacts to the garden. Our team doesn't think there will be any, but we did tell the community, if there are impacts to garden beds, as far as shading goes, we're just simply going to move them to the west. The garden sits, it goes east to west on that plan, and we'll just shift those beds over if there is a need to. We've got, we received a lot of questions about water and sewer and capacity. Again, they're fifty-two units, one bedroom, based on historical uses and that type of use. At this time, we don't think that anything will be an issue when it comes to water and sewer, but similar to other times, we will engage the engineering firm Weston and Sampson to do an analysis, to review, and then provide the board with a memo if it comes to that time. And then there was questions about trash removal as well. Currently, there is a trash and recycling for the meeting house tenants that are in there. That's simply just, it's going to be relocated and just be extended to be larger, just to support the additional folks here. The other concern or questions that we received a lot of was parking, and I know this is, this is an informational meeting, this isn't site plan review, but I just thought it was important for the board and for the folks, again, to hear what our proposed parking plan looks like now, conceptually. So after doing some due diligence with the planning department and from the zoning bylaw, we started out with the requirement of half a space per unit, and half a space per unit would be twenty-six. Myself, Grantham Group, we don't think that's enough parking for that type of facility. So right now, we're developing a plan that in the, in and around the building itself would be forty-two spaces for them. So it exceeds the zoning requirement now. There is an internal parking lot, as you can see on the screen, right inside that L-shaped building. There's also on-street parking along Wareham Road that we're proposing, along with the parallel on-street parking along Sunflower Way that we're proposing. And then obviously, to feed the needs of the existing facilities, the site plan would propose a new parking lot to the left of the existing meeting house and restaurant buildings that are there. And so we think that, that would be pretty adequate. All the parking requirements per the uses out of there will meet zoning, if not exceed it, but I know that will be a conversation as we go for site plan review. And then with that, I just wanted to end it one more time, just to reiterate the program here. And I, and I have to say, as a lifelong resident of Plymouth, as it relates to affordable housing, this project, I think, that we're proposing, I would match it against anything else we've ever done in this town or even nearby this town. There are fifty-two units, all affordable, and most importantly, forty-two out of the fifty-two are sixty percent or below from an AMI perspective. And that's what we consider deeply affordable units. And that's why the funding comes in, as Walter explained, from state sources, from local sources, to land donations. And again, all fifty-two units would qualify for the SHI, and if asked by the Board of Selectmen to get a preference, seventy percent preference would be local. And the most important thing in my eyes is allow aging in place. As I read those notes before at the beginning about the master plan and the affordable housing plan, allowing people to age in place with integrity and dignity, and stay the rest of their lives in the place that they grew up, and sometime multiple generations, is important to me as a person, and as a resident of Plymouth, and as a developer. And I just want to say thank you for your time, and if there are questions, we'll be glad to answer those.
Okay, thank you. Before we do any questioning, I just like to ask, how many people in here, by a show of hands, would like to speak on this proposal? I see two. Okay. Three, four. All right. Before we, excuse me?
How about two?
Yeah, I'm doing inside the room first. Thank you. All right, so we've got four or five inside the room, and do we have people on Zoom that are wishing to speak also?
If anybody...
I'm not going to start with anybody, but I just want to know...
We don't have anybody yet, but when you do on Zoom, raise your hand if you'd like to speak onto this after the room is completed.
You see any, Robin? At this point, I'm just going to say, when you come up to the microphone, please state your name for the record. This is, we are not voting on anything here this evening. It's just a presentation being made by Red Brook to the planning board, and also the CPC was invited, and the Affordable Trust Group was invited also. Is anybody here from the CPC at all? No. Bill Gohann is right there, okay. And the Affordable Housing Group? Anyone here from that group? No. One way in the back. Okay, thank you. All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to let you come up to the microphone, and I'm going to limit your comments to three minutes, and I'm going to hold that. So as soon as the three minutes are up, I will interrupt you, and I apologize for doing that, to move on to another speaker. So when you come to the microphone, please state your name for the record. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, planning board. Nothing prepared, just moved it in April. Nothing prepared, just moved it in April. Was given a master plan with a diagram that specifically stated the future plans of that community center. There was one building paying attention to, one building that wasn't built, but it was on the map to scale. I'm on Sunflower Way. Number one, I have absolutely no reason to speak against affordable housing, it's sorely needed, but I'm very familiar with that postage stamp that they want to put 52 units on with a elevation of about 52 feet. It's impossible. And aside from that, I've learned enough that the community is in dire need of families. And I think I've seen enough numbers that people that need affordable housing, the most important would be single parents with kids. The last desirable need for affordable housing would be the elderly. The elderly more often than not have their own homes, or they're being taken care of in their own homes. I'm getting bits of information as to how this was put together and shoehorned into this particular lot. It's somewhat discouraging to be sold a bill of rights to move in and see the original master plan deterred or eliminated from. I'm on Sunflower Way. If there's a 52-foot-high building on the other side of my property, it just ruins the whole aspect of not only my property, but the community center, which was very graphically designed to maintain a smooth, woodsy, comfortable, even the playground was designed. Right now, it's just a trailer and restaurants in the front. I have... Couple more.
30 seconds, sir.
Pardon?
30 seconds you have remaining.
All right, I'll keep quiet. But just my concerns, I'm disappointed, I've lived in eight different places, I've lived 40 years on the South Coast, South Shore, I lived in Duxbury, I lived at the Pine Hills. One of the reasons for concern at the Pine Hills, when Green decided he was going to build that monstrosity on the green, that, it was, just ruined the whole texture, the ambiance of what Pine Hills was, he started with. I see the makings of that, of this 52-unit, unit.
Sir, three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who else would like to speak, please? Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, I'm well, how are you? Thank you. Kimberly Karas from Nine Sunflower Way. I've written to you, you probably received a couple of my letters, one today and one earlier, thank you. So those are part of the record. I just beg you, when this comes before you, to, to pull out the real contract here, which is written in 2008, and that's a special permit, and that's what governs, even just talk of the playground, the developer overlooks that the agreement was to build the playground in a village mixed-use area. So they can't just throw it down in the bogs and away from where, you know, people and where children are going to be alone and unsafe. So just, those are a couple considerations, but I do implore on you to go back to the special permit. My main contention, I think this is a great idea, we do need affordable housing, and it should be at Redbrook, but it should be done in accordance with the special permit. And it should be done in accordance with proper procedure, which I do not believe was followed here. The special permit, the contract, contemplates itself for substantial changes in what needs to happen. There are two substantial changes here. One is who's paying for it. It's not ADMAP piece anymore, they get the funding from the CPC in the town and taxpayer money. And the second substantial change is that there are no longer 50 units of assisted living of affordable housing. Now, this is quote elderly housing. So that was not contemplated in the special permit. The consequences of bypassing the Planning Board and going directly to the CPC is that citizens weren't given, abutters weren't given notice and an opportunity to be first heard before you folks, the Planning Board. Even Chair Cohen remarked on this improper procedure when these folks went before the CPC. Assisted living is not synonymous with elderly affordable housing. The former must be congregated together, the latter is completely capable and deserving of being dispersed and not segregated. If it is segregated as proposed, you will be creating second-class citizens at Redbrook who don't even get the numerous amenities in the letters that I pointed out quoting, the amenities from their webpage, that are provided to the residents of the market-rate apartments. I think this would actually be discrimination. Thank you. Residents of Redbrook will inherit the management and operations of the infrastructure of Redbrook, so we have a stake in the outcome. We don't want overdevelopment, we don't want a green or center like Pine Hills, the building's too large in size and scale. It apparently is the cheapest place to put it, but town officials should be listening to their constituents and representing the taxpayers, not a private developer. And I don't think we should be subsidizing half of a private developer's affordable housing obligation imposed back in 2008.
Excuse me, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please repeat your name so we can, I couldn't quite hear it, and just repeat your name for Ms. Keane, please?
Yes, Kimberly Karas, K-A-R-A-S-S, Nine Sunflower Way.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, can you pull that microphone, sir, close to you so we can, everyone can hear you? Thank you.
Got it. Joe Hutchinson, 14 Summer Sweet Circle in Redbrook. I'd like to say, first of all, that 103 units that ADM is obligated for will get built, irrespective of whether these 52 get built by Grantham or not. So the 103 affordable units that are owed the town will, will get built. When I bought my house in, in Redbrook, on the table at ADM's sales office was a marketing tool that ADM refers to as a master plan. And it showed features that were meant to help us decide to buy, but which I also thought of as, as a promise. And this proposal defies that promise. It, it intrudes on the north side, behind the meeting house, on the plan that was shown, and it, as the previous speaker said, shoehorns a very, very large form factor onto a lot in which it, it doesn't fit, in which the, the folks would have a tough time parking. I'd also say, though, that we would love to have a conversation with ADM on their master planning process and, you know, help, help us understand where they plan to put the, the affordable housing that, that is owed to the town. So, thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Yes, sir, in the back? Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Keith Graul, 14 River Birch Way. So I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, because I thought it was just informational, so I didn't bring all my notes with me, but just a general overview of what we see as residents at Redbrook. I've lived in Redbrook now for almost eight years, I'm one of the original neighborhoods. And people might think it's getting tiring, but if you look at Dan's presentation tonight, we're about 80% built out between apartments and residential homes. So if there's 103 affordables that should be put in, do you know what, currently we only have 15 that are actually affordable at Redbrook right now? So my biggest concern is, is that the town, Redbrook, everybody is being pigeonholed into the remaining units that are left to get this done. And that's the biggest issue that we have as residents, is that we're putting this project in the wrong location, right idea, we need affordable housing, we're all for it, but when you look at Dan, it's all smoke and mirrors. The 52, let's, let's just assume that gets done somewhere on the Redbrook property. Then he talks about the 15 existing in the apartments, then he talks about these 10 phantom homes that are going to be built in the residential neighborhoods. They're not going to get, you can't build affordable at Redbrook in the neighborhoods. We have to come up with a better solution, we have to have discussions about what is still usable land left, and how do we make affordable housing? Because I know what's going to happen, he's going to get this 52, then he's going to go for another 100 apartments, and he's going to promise the town that we're going to be able to hit our 103, because now we've got another 100 apartments, and we're going to put 50 of those into affordability. They're not showing on those maps where the new apartments are going. Right now, it shows as a space. So you put those across the street from the 52 units, you're going to basically be jamming in a lot of people into that space. All I'm saying is, I appreciate you giving, letting us have comments tonight, didn't expect to have comment, but we will, as residents, we just want to say, we're, at the end of the day, we're the ones that have to live in this community. They're all, these people that are at Redbrook, ADM, they're not going to live in the community. They're not going to have to deal with the traffic, they're not going to have to deal with 62-year-old-plus people backing out into Wareham. I know how it works. So I appreciate your time.
Excuse me, how old were those people again?
They're going to be 62 and older.
Did you say 62?
Yes.
I'm 62.
I'm 62.
All right.
But the problem is, they only had, originally only had a half a car per a person, so I don't know how 62 people, 52 people can each drive a half a car. So we all know zoning is a problem here, we know parking will be a problem, but these are things that we have to live with.
30 seconds.
These are things that we have to live with as residents, we're the ones that are going to continue to live there. I plan on being there another 20 years, health willing, and I plan on outliving the ADM build-out, so when we get to 95%, we can actually do things that are good for the community. So that's all, I appreciate you giving us time tonight, didn't expect it, but we will be back when the permitting process, if it gets through town meeting, that's our next objective. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, please, no, no clapping. You only clap when I'm done speaking, right? Now you want me to be done, I'm done. But I appreciate it, yes, all the comments we've received so far this evening. Is there anybody else here wishing to speak that has anything? Remember, we are not voting on anything, this is strictly a, a presentation, so anybody have any quick comments they'd like to make? You certainly can. Not seeing any hands, anybody on Zoom? Oh, yes, please, I put up your hand, absolutely. How are you tonight?
Thank you, Planning Board members, my name is Susan Affleck Childs. I live at 23 Winterberry Way in the Winterberry neighborhood in Redbrook. I am a retired town planner from the town of Medway, worked there for 20 years, worked a lot with developers, engineers, contractors, et cetera, et cetera. So I come to the podium, having been in this seat over here where Robin is, and, and working with boards and committees. I guess I'd just like some clarification from the Planning Board as to what the permitting process indeed will be. I've heard reference to site plan review, and I'm wondering how that will work, what the site plan rules and regulations are that will apply, that the staff and the Planning Board will use to review the project. I also understand that there will need to be some, I believe it's called waivers, from the original special permit that would pertain to the height of the proposed building. I'm wondering if there are other waivers that may indeed need, may be needed from, from the special permit, and if there's any other variances from zoning bylaw that might apply, or whether the special permit sort of overrules, you know, any other sort of zoning. So I do have some concerns about the project, as well as a planner, very concerned about the overall height, wondering if there's a design review process for the building itself, whether that's part of your job or not. And hope that there will certainly be full rigorous review of the stormwater design, and also a real, real look at the parking, proposed parking, and the, the intersection of, of River Runway and Wareham Road with this front-end parking so close to that intersection, and with all the apartments that are north of that coming down in front of this building. So thank you for the time, thank you for your work as Planning Board members, you guys are special people, and you are to be admired for your dedication. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your service as a town planner, and, and all the questions you just asked would be reviewed through the process. Right now, we're only in a conceptual first look as Planning Board and planning staff. So there is no real plan or structural plans or site plans, drainage plans, stormwater plans, there's nothing but what you saw here this evening, and that's what we have seen. So there is no actual plans to be reviewed. If it is approved, obviously, on the, on the town meeting floor, as far as this is going to have to go to town meeting, if I'm not mistaken, correct? Yes, this has to go to town meeting for approval, before it even comes back to the Planning Board at all. It has to be approved through the town meeting process, which is, which is a long, arduous process, as a lot of us know. Right, Bill? Mr. Cohen? He understands. All right, along with all the other members here this evening that are town meeting members or someone who's been involved in the town meeting process. So again, this is just conceptual. Was there anybody on Zoom at all?
Is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to speak to this? Yes, there is, William White.
William White. William White, how are you this evening?
I'm well, can you hear me, sir?
You have three minutes, starting now.
Very good, I'll try to be brief. I live at 5 Sunflower Way, I live directly across the street from this proposed project. When my wife and I bought our home, we bought it based on what we saw across the street from where our house was going to be built, the playground, the community garden, and then there was a, a construction trailer, roughly the same, well, a little bit smaller than what they had on the master plan for future building. We moved in this past April, then they hit us with this, and I feel like they're going to be erecting a 50-foot wall directly in front of my home. Had I known that they were going to do this, I would never have bought this place. I don't have a problem with, with affordable housing for seniors, I think it's a great idea. If they could locate it, relocate this someplace else on the property, they have plenty of land, I would have no problem, I'd support it wholeheartedly. But what they're trying to do, the size and the scale on that size, it's awful, it's a horrible idea. And unfortunately, my wife and I and my neighbors are going to be paying the price for them not paying attention to building what their promised affordable housing obligation to the town of Plymouth. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on Zoom, Robin? I don't see any hands on that screen.
No.
Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the Planning Board for initial comments. Remember, we're not reviewing a project, we're reviewing the conceptual idea, and if you have any initial questions for the presenters this evening, I would appreciate it. Let me start with Ms. Keane.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grandy, Mr. Chairman. So first, I want to say, I'd like to get this microphone to work, I hope you can hear Affordable housing, 52 units, all of that, everyone says wonderful, it'll count towards our 10%. So the concept, I think there's no disagreement. But when you start to dig deep down and take a look at what's actually happening with the concept, I have some, some specific questions, not about the architecture, and what the citizens, now the residents of Redbrook, have brought up, I take very, very seriously. People invest all their life savings in a home. People invest all their life savings in a home and they have expectations when they do that. But I've been on the planning board now for five years, two years as alternate, three years as an elected member. And one of the first things that I learned on the planning board is affordable and age restriction are not compatible in Massachusetts. And I've requested the citation from Mr. Hartman several times and he has told me he's working on it. So, let me just phrase this a little bit differently. You say that these are fifty-two affordable units. You're calling them assisted living and you're calling them age restricted. So, is it, do you meet the federal requirements for an age-restricted building?
So, it's not assisted living, just to be clear, it's senior housing.
Well, you have called it assisted living at least fifteen times in your presentation today.
No, other types of housing we developed have been assisted living in our community that we're proposing here as senior housing.
So you're calling it senior housing, which is synonymous to age-restricted?
Correct, sixty-two plus.
So, when we have affordable housing, and it does say on the DHC website and all the citations I could find, and again, I haven't gotten an answer from Mr. Hartman, what can you use now, what is the state requirement for age restriction and affordable housing? Because we have never talked about affordable housing in an age-restricted community and we have addressed that many, many times. Many of our developers, some of whom are sitting here right now, have to build off-site and give us another unit or two someplace else because they have an age-restricted community. So how are you integrating all of those with the state laws? Please enlighten me.
Sure, so the state and the federal government do allow you to classify a deed-restricted community that is going to be financed through low-income housing tax credits as age-restricted to sixty-two plus?
Would you be able to provide me at least, maybe the other board members are curious, with that citation?
Sure.
We'd be happy to provide you a contact at the executive.
No, 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 I don't want to do the work for you to provide me.
Sir, when you speak, you speak in the microphone.
So, so the statute is forty-B, so any time you have affordably de-restricted property that's been financed with low-income housing tax credits, that is eligible for the subsidized housing inventory. Because it's, because it's controlled by a housing regulatory agreement held by HLC in the state.
So you're saying this, did you say this was a forty-B? No, you didn't say that.
Forty-B governs the subsidized housing inventory.
And so, could you please spell that out in a sort of bullet point document that you forward to this board, to the chairman of this board? Because we need to understand that much better than I currently understand it. And I have not been given an answer that I'm very comfortable with. That's on the age restriction. So, this isn't assisted living, this isn't a nursing home, this is senior housing, it'll all be affordable. All the things. Now, the second thing I wanted to say is that your four million dollar request to the, from the Community Preservation Trust here in Plymouth is one of the largest requests that I've heard of since my time in Plymouth and may be one of the largest requests ever. Now, this is citizen money, in other words, we pay for this. Everyone that lives in Plymouth that owns property is paying one-point-five percent surcharge on their property taxes. We're willing to do that because it's a comprehensive fund for many of the efforts and those are actually guided by the Community Preservation Act. But this four million dollars being the largest ever puts a huge burden on our trust fund to the point where the opportunity costs are really quite high. And the citizens, town meeting in particular, are going to have to make a decision on what opportunities are we missing to conserve land, to have historic preservation for many years to come? Because we're going to invest four million dollars in a project for fifty-two units of housing. Also, because this is funded by the federal government, the state government, our community, our citizens, at some point, if this is not a not-for-profit, there's going to be a revenue stream and that revenue stream is going to be a profit. So at some point, you're going to have a break-even and you'll have a margin on this. Who will get the revenues? When is that break-even? What do you consider the margin?
Yeah, that's actually a great question, so the nice thing about you investing in the project as a city or town and also the state investing in the project is we prepare a budget that is issued and if we end up exceeding that budget, we, as the developer and the management agent, will end up being responsible for those costs. If we are under budget, part of that money is shared with the town, with the state and with the developer.
Do you have those percentages?
So, actually, it's a great, the other point I'd like to make about that is that if there's a situation where, excuse me, revenues exceed operational costs, those revenues are spread out among the funding partners. So for example, in Situate, Situate put in two-point-five million dollars on thirty units. They committed that money in two thousand seventeen. Each year, we cut a check to the CPC and Affordable Housing Trust Fund for twenty-five thousand dollars to repay the debt. Because this project, we'll be taking debt on by, from the CPC and Affordable Housing Trust. The town will have a seat at the table and that we're receiving revenues from the project if there are revenues to be had.
So, is there a guarantee that's going to be built into the approval by the Community Preservation Act that a certain percentage over time will come back to the citizens of Plymouth?
The state mandates it, we won't get to a closing table without it. They make sure that all projects that are requesting money from the state, that they end up getting money back if the project is A, either under budget, or B, if it performs above budget. And just like Michael had said, we had a construction savings that we had in Situate. Like I said, even during COVID, we came in under budget. We ended up giving money back to the town of Situate as well as we also had a cost savings that we had from annual operations that the town got money back as well.
The CPC is very used to coming, projects coming in under budget and money going back to the CPC.
Oh, good.
What we're not used to is ongoing projects over a period of time and I anticipate you think that this will last fifty, hundred years, for monies to go back over a period of time. And so you're saying that it's not just project costs, but it's actually revenues over the time and the life of the building that will come back to this community?
Correct, there's a, correct, there's an audit that's done on the project every year by cert, by the accountants. They come up with a cash flow. Part of that cash flow goes back to the town through its CPC and Affordable Housing Trust. Part of it will end up going back to the, to the state as well.
Is there any way that the citizens, the residents of Redbrook who are impacted by this can basically get compensated for an impact fee in any way, shape or form? Those people that don't want to look at this or whose lives have been impacted negatively because of four, our five-story building?
Is there not owners in the project, they wouldn't be compensated, but obviously if the town wanted to compensate them from some of those fees that are coming back to the town, the town can do what it would like.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And one other point I want to make about this project is that.
Sir, you need to.
Oh, sorry, I do apologize.
You need to speak into the microphone, sorry.
I do apologize, ooh, that got loud. This project, a hundred percent of the units in this project will be affordable in perpetuity. I want to distinguish ourselves from the fly-by-night forty-B developers that you probably see pretty often that say, you know, we'll do twenty percent of the project, will be affordable. We are committed to a hundred percent affordability, deep affordability in perpetuity. And the way you get to that deep affordability is by buying down the capital cost of the project. Situate understood that and that's why the town put two-point-five million dollars into that project in order to buy in that deep, deep affordability in perpetuity.
Can I just have one comment, if you don't mind?
Yeah, Dan, I want to yield to my fellow board members because I'm sort of hogging the.
Okay.
But I thank you, I thank you for answering my questions.
You're very welcome.
Alright, thank you. David, please.
I will have many architectural and planning questions later, I'm a retired architect. But your presentation didn't mention at all infrastructure. Availability of water and sewer, you know, can the existing infrastructure or will this project include investments to improve the infrastructure that helps everybody in Redbrook? So that's a question.
Yeah, I'll have Dan speak, Dan will speak about that.
Yeah, it's me too, a couple times. So as far as infrastructure, there's existing infrastructure there today that these folks will tie into. So there's existing infrastructure that the building would tie into, both water, sewer, gas, electric. Both, water is a private water company. There are connection fees associated with that, that's between the private water company and the Grantham Group. There's also connection fees as it relates to sewer, which right now is also a private company. But those fees will be paid to those two entities, if that's what you're referring to. And then also, they will now be users of water and sewer, just like everyone else that lives in Redbrook and they'd be two paying those fees also.
Well, my point is, in your future presentations, also mention, you know, capacity and infrastructure that whatever you're doing. And certainly be looking for transportation studies, because I was just speaking about one aspect. You know, backing into Wareham Road is something that troubles me as a planning part. But there's going to be many others with the, you know, the upcoming process when, you know, one of the residents ask about that. So there'll be lots of details to look at and ask questions about in the future.
Absolutely.
I just want to say, I support affordable housing too. I'm uneasy about that particular location for it, but I'll await further development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Kyle, please.
So, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year, thank you for, Happy New Year to everyone as well. So a couple more questions I have are in regards to looking at the hundred percent restricted income on these, these units. So I guess it's kind of piggybacking off of my, my other board member. What is actually your business model for revenue for these units? Is it, is it fixed over so many years? Does that, is there a percentage increase on these units?
So sure, so the residents pay rent and their rent is restricted based on what HUD says it, tells us that they can pay based on the eighty percent area median income, sixty percent area median income, a thirty percent area median income. So as those rates, is those, is the median income changes, so could the rent?
Alright. And the state man, is mandating those rates, correct?
No, it's the federal government. It's HUD.
It's HUD.
HUD, correct.
Okay, federal government.
For clarity's sake, the state does sign off annually on our, on our rental rates. So the state typically doesn't allow rental rates to increase above one and a half percent per annum and they'll hold you to that. So basically, the way you're able to, like, the business model is you buy down the cost of constructing the project so that you can keep, you can keep people there at a far, far lower rate, a rental rate than you would in a typical market rate development where you're borrowing the bulk of your financing. You know, the eighty, eighty percent of your, in a typical rental project, you know, eighty to ninety percent of the capital costs of building that project come from debt and will be repaid from the revenues of the project. We have the inverse model, where we have to come up with, you know, eighty percent of the cost of the building in the form of equity or grants and soft debt and, because the project can't support debt, because it doesn't have enough debt capacity. There's not enough money coming in on an annual basis to pay down a large mortgage.
Okay, so the reason why, the reason why I ask what I'm asking is because there has, in the typical, not, I would say it's typical, but in a lot of senior housing developments, it's once you get the senior in there, later on, it's, you know, this price and then the price keeps going up, keeps going up, keeps going up.
It's restricted.
But this is, I mean, this is good to hear that it's, at least it's being regulated and mandated from somewhere else besides just a developer.
Correct.
And I also, I'm also saying this so that our community understands that as well.
It's deed-restricted, so it would be in our deed that we can only charge so much for rent for these units.
And then we are annually subject to the Executive Office Housing and Livable Communities, HLC's, annual audit process. And so they approve all of our budgets, they approve all of our rental rates. And you can, it's very, there's a lot of controls under those affordable housing monitoring programs that the state has. So, what's, what differentiates our project from other affordable projects typically that you might see is that the regulatory mechanism is always over our shoulder, looking down and making sure that the project is affordable in perpetuity.
And how long do you see, how long do you see this project happening from start to finish?
So it would take about a year to build, but for us to be able to get into a shovel into the ground from now, you're talking probably almost two years.
Okay.
There's a lot of hurdles that still have to overcome, right?
Yeah, that's true, you still, you still haven't made it past town meeting yet, so. But I was just, I was just curious.
We don't have one dollar yet.
Yeah.
We have a concept.
Okay. And I think all my other questions that I have will be saved for if we do get to the next step in this, in this process. Yield, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You've heard from the board members, you've heard from the community, so you know what the questions are that are coming to you. I'm, I'm not going to ask you questions about financing. Those are questions you are certainly, however, going to need to answer for town meeting.
Thank you.
I am not going to ask you questions about a building that has yet to be truly designed. That's something that we will get to, we will, we will cross that bridge when we get to it. What I am going to sue is make some suggestions to you, if we get there, as to things you may wish to consider based upon the comments that we've heard tonight from the board and from the residents. The height of the building. Now, I haven't seen anything that says fifty-two feet. Everything I've seen did however say that the peaks could get to forty-six feet. So, it's a difference, but it may not be a difference with the significance as far as some of the residents who are going to be facing this may feel. Anything that can be done to minimize the impact is going to be something that we will significantly consider. That's going to be a focus. Parking. I am always surprised when I look at our town bylaws and regulations and what we're requiring in various things. And I noted with some surprise recently when senior housing came up and it says point-five parking spaces per unit. Well, as my illustrious chair pointed out, he's sixty-two. I know he has a car. I know most seniors have a car. Not just half a car, a whole car. So I was pleased to see that as part of the conceptual design, greater than half a parking space was considered. I think that's something that we as a board need to look at more seriously. Because when that original bylaw was created, the concept of senior housing was different and seniors were different. And we see greater longevity, greater activity, and this is wonderful news for the residents of Plymouth, less so for those of us who have to drive with them. So, I want to make sure that they have the appropriate parking and traffic means to address this so that, again, those who may have some challenges driving are not backing out into Wareham Road and those who are using vehicles have a reasonable place to put them. So again, not something I'm asking you to address now, but those will be significant considerations. Obviously, you as the Grantham Group have nothing to do with what is physically there now or what was promised to residents, et cetera. For that, that's something that I think the owner of the property will need to be a little bit clearer about. Because residents are entitled to have their expectations met. If they had misunderstandings, we want to know why that is, because we don't want that to occur. It is something we do hear frequently. When a new development comes in, we regularly hear from people, I didn't know that that could go there. And we'd like to know why it was they didn't know that. Whether it was somebody's fault in sales and development, whether it was the buyer's. fault for not doing their due diligence, whether it was our fault for not being clear in our maps and plans as to where things can and can't be built. So, again, something that we would like to understand, I'm sure. I, I don't want to speak for the whole board, it's something that I would at least like to understand. So with those considerations, thank you very much for your presentation, and I look forward to seeing how this project progresses.
Thank you.
Okay, now the 62-year-old gets to speak. Everything that's been said this, this evening, including the residents who came up and spoke, which obviously this is really not a public hearing, but we allot, we treated it like a public hearing, so we could hear from the residents of the community as you made your presentation this evening. And to my understanding, the community preservation committee voted in favor of this. Am I right or correct, or what was the vote? Do you remember what it was? Four to two. Okay. So you still have some convincing to do along the lines, getting to the town meeting floor for the approval of the funding, obviously. So I'm not going to get into the minutia of the development. Again, as Mr. Walton stated, that's for a later date, because I'm not one to waste breath and time. So everything you've heard this evening, I hope you take into consideration to include a traffic study of some type to show exactly how many trips are going to be added. And again, that gets into the, the building design, the site plan, everything else, and all the reviews, the waivers you're going to be requesting for height. The, the design of the building also, which I would like to see incorporated the, all of the Red Brook area and that South Plymouth area within the design, not to make it pedestrian and flat, so to speak, in your designs. They need to be within keeping for the, the whole area of make peace, even though some of them are identically the same, depending on the developer that's working on the particular area. But there's a lot of, you got a long road to hoe, and I'm here to work with you, the board's here to work with you, community preservation's working with you, the town, the board of selectmen, the residents themselves. There's a long list of people to bring something like this to fruition. When you speak to people in the town of Plymouth that are over 62 and over, and they're looking for a place like this, there is no place for them to go in the town of Plymouth. That's why we make the comment, and it's in this report, which I kind of like to see, was age and place. I don't want to have to leave Plymouth to go somewhere, maybe when I'm 63. But I think you get what I'm, understand what I'm trying to say here. It's, it's a work in progress, and everybody needs to work together to come to some reason, because we have to make affordable units in, in this town. I have family members, other people in this room probably have sons and daughters that had to move out of the town of Plymouth, because there is no affordable places, even though this is not one for them. But as example, not only do the young people need affordable places, but seniors need an affordable place to go also. Is it in the right place? That remains to be seen and decided upon by a lot of people in this community, including yourself and town meeting members that are here, and the planning board, and the board of selectmen, the Affordable Housing Trust and group. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but I appreciate the presentation and all the questions, especially from the board members and the, the community that lives where this development is. With that, I thank you for the presentation. In a, quickly, quickly, please.
So I, I didn't hear that you were going to submit to the board the citations that I requested.
So you just want to make sure that this could be an age-restricted community?
Correct, because you've called yourself multiple things, and I'd like to know in each of those categories where you're permitted to do this.
Yep, when we come.
And make sure that goes then to the board.
Yep.
And I just have one comment to Mr. Gorsak, and that is, you are zoned a trivid, which is a traditional rural village development. That's where, how you are zoned, and I want to, you to understand how there seems to be a discordance or disconnect here with a traditional rural village design or development. Thank you.
So just present that information to the planning staff, and they can forward it along to the members. You don't have to forward it to individual members. Send it to the staff here at Town Hall, the planning staff.
Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would say a short five-minute recess. Thank you. Good evening, and the planning board is now back in session. Next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA case 4116, first Citizens FCU special permit required per section 203.7.2, section 203.7D, and 203.7G1 to modify visual relief for parking areas per section 206.1, Aqua for Use Table number 15 to allow 15%, greater than 15% or more than 2,500 square feet of impervious surfaces, and per 205-16 MC Dimensional Table to waive side setback requirements. Good evening. How are you? You've been here a long time tonight, huh?
The crowd's gone. Bill Shaw from Associated Engineers.
Are you 62?
Pardon me?
Are you 62? I was just checking.
Plus, plus 12.
Plus 12. Okay.
This is a project that many of you have seen before. It's at the corner of Commerce Way and Industrial Park Road. It's across the street from Dunkin' Donuts. It's in front of the new storage facility, and it's at the corner of Resnick Road. This project has been, the, been proposed to be an office building at one time, the Rising Tide School, a bank recently, and the permit lapsed. It was permitted in 2000, and then 2020, and lapsed in 2022. And now they're back in order to re-permit the bank and move forward with that. Essentially, the bylaw has changed since the last bank that was approved. The banks used to be required a special permit regardless of where they were or what they did. Now they don't, and we're looking for the ability to do a robust planting plan and park, not park, but have driveways within 10 feet of the street lines. We've got 20 parking spaces, a 3,000-square-foot bank with a drive-through. The drive-through is on the tail end of it, so there is a huge queue on the lot itself in order to take care of that. Additionally, in this particular zone and, and these development areas, we have town sewer, town water, a rigorous drainage proposition where we have storm scepters, MS4 requirements where we've put a one-inch runoff within the, the galley system that you see in front of the, the drive-through. And, and then all of that goes to the town system, which was state-of-the-art back when it was done. It has infiltration systems, lime basins, and it goes to an area where it eventually infiltrates into the ground. So all of that being said, they're looking to re-up that permit. If there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And if John, I don't know if John is available, is he?
I'm here.
Oh, good. So.
Mr. Henson's on there?
Yes. He'll be able to explain the rigorous landscaping.
All right. Robin, does staff have any comments initially before?
Just, just briefly, as, as Bill mentioned, the only dimensional requirement that they're requesting is the reduction in the side setback. And on your chart in your staff report, I need to tweak the numbers a little bit, they're within a foot. I had them from an older plan. So the side setback I have is they're requesting on the plan, it says 35.75 instead of the 40, it's 36.6. So there's just some little tweaks, but I'll modify those. But other than the side setback, all the other dimensional standards comply. They have more parking, two more parking spaces than are required for the bank. And as Bill mentioned, they have modified, they have the visual relief for the parking areas by putting the driveways on the perimeter and the parking within the area outside of the 20-foot setback, and, as he said, extensive landscaping to buffer that as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone here this evening wishing to speak on this proposal? See no one? Anyone online? Robin, on Zoom? Okay. All right, I'll bring it to the board. Kyle, please.
I don't have any questions this time.
Okay, thank you. David?
I can get this foolish thing to go.
I know.
I got it. Okay. A couple things, Bill, on the site. I didn't see snow storage noted. I didn't see site lighting shown. The VanES report recommended secure bike storage, and I didn't see bikes on the site. I also saw VanES recommendation for a six-month check, because will there be lighting, you know, a traffic light timing adjustments as opposed to building a new traffic light? But I think we should, I'm talking to my colleagues here as well, that, you know, clarify what happened, who does the six-month check after occupancy, and who's responsible for that, and also when the transportation demand manager, the TDM, is appointed. Maybe one has been appointed already, but I think, you know, as the place gets busier and busier and the sites get filled up, I think that's a good recommendation to have a TDM designee, may already be in place, but, so there's, you know, three or four things either to be added to the planning, I mean, to the plan itself, could just go in the recommendations, because I think this, this will ultimately just be proposed a recommendation to the ZBA. As for the design, the use, the location, I have no objections to it, but just want to make it a user-friendly site with snow, bikes, consider an EV charging station, you don't have to do it, but maybe they've thought about it. I bring it up every time we talk to people. It is a convenience and an attraction to users, bank users. But, so it's, it's a bunch of, I'd consider qualitative comments to the applicant.
Thank you, Dave. I want to go back to the Y at microphones. Next week? Okay. Thank you, Dave. Ms. Keen, please.
Okay, we got it to work. Mr. Shaw, I'm very familiar with this. I remember when you came before us with this project, and I think we had some significant questions, but I think we're going to start to call ourselves Plymouth Delaware, because we have so many banks going up, particularly in this area. We've approved so many recently. But my questions have to do with this location, and I know you were asked these questions before, but I'd like just to get it on the record at the planning board. We have had a moratorium on water in West Plymouth, and we've lost some significant projects, particularly the mental health hospital, which I was very sad that it went elsewhere because we couldn't provide them in the water, just a few blocks away from where this is going to be built. So have we lifted this moratorium? Maybe this is the question for Robin, so that you could move forward with this. I just would like some clarification, because I know the question came up at the West Plymouth Steering Committee and, and such.
The, the water usage here is the same as a four-bedroom house. It's, it's 450 gallons per day. Half of that actually is the average, so it's very minor compared to the developments that you're talking about. Additionally, if for some reason we aren't able to tie in because of a policy issue, we could drive a well, because it's not, you know.
Yeah, I think some of it had to do with the booster and the ability to get the water there, and do you have a comment on that, Robin?
Yeah, so they're still working on the, the booster pump. That has not happened yet. And this, as, as Bill mentioned, on a couple of the other banks that we had this issue as well, they did have in their plans that they could put, they would put a well in if they can't tie into the water. I don't know if the moratorium is still on, I'll have to check on that, but they can certainly put a well in if they need to, if they can't tie in.
So maybe that should be stated somewhere in our condition book. I've got David nodding, so.
Well, I'm just saying, it was in, you know, several other bank or project approvals, just add that language.
Right. So we'll just add that.
It's either tying in or a new, a new well.
Yeah. Right. We'll add that as a condition with the other ones that David mentioned already.
And then on the VanES traffic report, I have to admit I didn't read all those numbers, but I got the essence of the traffic report. But there's, on page 21 of our packet, but it says that there are conditions that are going to be for off-site with a traffic demand management. But that, it says it requires Commerce Way, Plaza Way. How would the input of all the businesses in those areas be coordinated with you building a bank there so that everyone is satisfied? Because you're going to change all the lights, you're going to do all of that. How are you going to coordinate that effort?
So VanES actually did counts on Plaza Way, on Commerce Way, and on Industrial Park Road. And, and it surprised me, what they did volunteer and say that they would do, and the bank has agreed, is that they will re-time the lights, which means that they'll go through those counts and look at the queues, the backup for each of the areas when the red lights come on, particularly in front of our site. There is a, a period there between 3:30 and 4:30 at night where they start to go around. And actually, if the, the light were green, they, oops, excuse me, they could, they could move out to the left or to the right and, and do a better job at that. So that's what they'll look at, and they'll look at the queues and, and look at the, the existing counts. And then, as it was mentioned earlier, they'll check it in six months to see how that worked.
So I know that VanES will do a great job, and they always have. What I'm more concerned about, just like we have notification to a butters if something is going to change, how will every one of the businesses that are going to be impacted by this be notified and be made part of the project? This will change traffic for the storage unit next door, for, you know, Chick-fil-A down the block.
So actually, what happens is it goes under the guise of the DPW. So what's going to happen is they're going to recommend the timing changes, they'll give it to the town. The town will take a look at that and, and see if there are impacts that are inappropriate. VanES also has to be completely aware of the fact that they can't impact, you know, another light or another queue adversely. So that's the trick, and that's why they do what they do.
So the short answer is the town will provide the coordination.
They'll have to approve it.
And provide the coordination with the other businesses. And I think the only thing beyond that, that just kind of sat with me a little bit, was the pervious versus impervious surfaces and what you're asking for, for a waiver. West Plymouth, water, pervious services, and you're doing a great job, you know, with stormwater runoff and all of that, in my perspective. Is there any way that you can stay within compliance of the impervious versus pervious services?
Yeah. The bank itself is 3,000 square feet. 2,500 square feet is the minimum that the bylaw says. Once you go over that, you have to start addressing things. We've infiltrated, the roof is completely infiltrated and left on-site, and one We've infiltrated, the roof is completely infiltrated and left on-site and one inch of everything that goes onto the pavement is infiltrated. All of that also goes through oil and grit separators before they get there.
Right, I saw that.
Yeah, so it, it's pretty comprehensive and it's twofold because once we're done with our site, the street drainage actually goes through the same process at the bottom of the hill and it does it over again. So.
So you're improving the street drainage.
You're getting it twice.
And in that respect, I just have my last question. When the storage unit came up, obviously they talked about your site and the storage unit itself, and please correct me if I'm wrong about that, but they had to dig way down, I mean, they had to remove, to level things off and to, to make that storage work for them. So the grade is different. Did they actually regrade this lot at the same time?
No, actually this lot was permitted first, the bank, in 2020, and the grade has not changed. Actually, we're, we left it exactly where it was on the first building.
Good, I'm very glad to hear that. So you're not closer to the water table. They are. Okay, thank you.
Yes, Steve, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So obviously we've talked a bit about the Van Ness report and all of its recommendations and so I just want to be clear that this particular project is proposing to follow the Van Ness report. Is that correct?
Will, yes.
Okay. Through the chair to staff, I did not note in the recommendations any reference to the Van Ness report and that the, and that the project would be adopting and following the Van Ness report. Am I missing something?
No, we can, we can add in a condition to that.
Okay, if it, if it's not there, I would suggest.
Yep, it's not, it's not in the conditions now, but we can do that certainly.
I would suggest to my fellow board members that we, we do that since that's obviously a significant portion of the design. Thank you.
All my questions have been asked by the other members, including the snow storage. Right there? I usually get, I usually get into the dumpster locations and crosswalks and handicap spots and everything else, but they're all there, right?
Yeah, and, and the DPW had some similar comments concerning what went on and, and we went through everything and the only change we had is we moved a crosswalk at the front of the building off of a catch basin so that we weren't, you know, having trouble with people stepping in that. Other than that, there's no significant change to anything that the DPW had to say in all of the comments concerning, you know, bike racks, the rest of it, there's space on the site for us to do that and we'd be glad to put those on.
Okay. I have nothing, no other questions other than the ones that have already been asked. So we're going to make an advisory report based on the vote here to the zoning board of appeals, just so everybody that's watching. Planning board is not the adjudicary board in this particular case, it is the zoning board of appeals. So there will be another hearing on this presentation. What is that date, sir?
It's a week from Monday.
Date. Somebody give me the date?
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second of January.
January 22nd at 7:00 PM?
Seven, yeah.
Yep, the zoning board of appeals, so just so everybody knows when that hearing is, if they're watching on TV or they watch the rebroadcast of the planning board. So with that, I'll entertain any other comments or motion from the board. As an advisory report to the zoning board of appeals.
I will move to approve case 4116 with the added conditions we discussed, one of which it just, I would like a separate one saying the plans shall add identification of location for snow storage, site lighting and bike storage as a separate line, an item that cross-references the Van Ness report, just like, you know, both I mentioned and Steve mentioned, and add that language about water, you know, private well or hooking up. So those are three additional conditions.
Does that include the six-month check? A suggestion, a suggestion to the developer on the vehicle charging station and potentially solar on the building as a suggestion?
Okay.
And I'm okay with adding both of those. They're, they're sort of non-binding, but they're, they're suggestions.
They are non-binding, yes. But we only suggest to the zoning board of appeals, they make the final call. They can wipe out everything that we suggested, which you've probably done in the past as a zoning board member, right, Mr. Ball?
We always listen to the planning board.
Ah, just checking.
We just disagree at times.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand. And that would be unanimous.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Bill.
Next on our agenda this evening, we have a public hearing, which I will read into the record. The planning board of the Town of Plymouth will hold a public hearing in the 1820 courtroom at 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts, on January 10th, 2024 at 7:05 PM. Now, look at your watches, well past that. On the petition of the Pine Hills LLC for approval of a modified definitive subdivision plan entitled Flagstone Plan of Land. On land located our five lanterns within the Pine Hills community and including the following parcels owned by Pine Hills LLC as shown on designated Plymouth Assessors map dated January 1st, 2022, map 78C, Lot &amp; Lots A-216 and A-251. The petitioner or its representatives or any other person interested and desiring to be heard on this request should appear at the time and place designated.
And Mr. Chair, for the record, I'm recusing myself from the discussion deliberation and voting on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. Good evening, how are you?
Good evening, Chair Grandy, how are you?
Good.
And members of the board. Thank you. My name is Deborah Sedaris and I am the president of Pine Hills LLC, the land development company for the Pine Hills. We have before you today or tonight, I should say, a subdivision plan proposed for a new five-home neighborhood that is located in Area 3 of the master plan. I know this is probably a little bit difficult to see, but it's approximately in this area of the, of the master plan. And so, and again, as, as I've said before, the master plan graphic is, was put together to delineate the areas where there were either buildable areas, which is the butterscotch, or anticipated open space, which is the dark green, and also the light yellow area, which is the neighborhood green or village green area. And so tonight we're talking about a butterscotch area that's, again, identified on the master plan graphic as Area 3. So the plan before you tonight is, again, is a five-home neighborhood to sort of orient folks a little bit. There's the arrow. This is the Hitching Post neighborhood. This is Old Tavern Trail. Five Lanterns is the road that comes in off of Old Tavern Trail and leads to a five-home, five-lanterns neighborhood. And then passed here, it connects to the Greens condominium. So those are the neighborhoods that are closest to the proposed new additional neighborhood. This is the Ryfield, which is really one of the only historic sort of mitigation, preservation elements of the master plan, but underneath it is the actual disposal, part of the disposal works for the sewer treatment plant. So the plan that you saw in your packets showed an, a sewer easement in this location going across from Old Tavern Trail, crossing a portion of this parcel and then continuing into five lan, sorry, into the new roadway, Flagstone. That sewer easement is actually since been reconsidered and the location for the sewer, which will come off of Old Tavern Trail, sorry, Old Tavern Trail, is it going to be in a different location? Let's see if I can, it actually doesn't quite show here, but it's going to come across at a lower point, connect to an existing manhole here and then into the neighborhood. So it'll go across open space that is owned by Pine Hills LLC. It won't impact any other third party and it will be directionally drilled so that we can avoid having to cut down trees or disturb any of the surface landscape that's in place here. These are the five home lots here. They are, there is a drainage facility here. The homes are going to be cottage design style homes, similar to the homes that are being built currently by Whitman Homes in the Standing Rock and Pennant Knoll neighborhoods in the Pine Hills. This type of home has been built in many different neighborhoods throughout the Pine Hills. And the plan was reviewed by the fire department. The length of the road and the turning radiuses for, for, to accommodate public safety vehicles and also the turnaround were deemed by the fire department to be appropriate and accurate. It will, this is an existing cart path for the golf course, which will stay in place. Again, the homes, these five homes will be oriented, the backs of the homes will be oriented towards the golf course. There will be views of the golf course. This is a 25-foot no, no build buffer that will remain in place as, in relationship to the golf course. And one other thing to talk about, and I'm moving to the, the topographic plan to do that, is there is a planned retaining wall, stone wall that will be put in place along the roadway. And that's there to basically, again, minimize the need to disturb any of this open space that is existing and will, is well-treed and will stay in that kind of natural tree buffer. So the wall allows us to build the road without having to disturb that. Relationship-wise, the homes here in Hitching Post are generally anywhere from 41 to 61, 62 feet higher than the, I should say the ground. The homes are even higher, but the ground here is 41 to 62 feet higher than the ground at the edge of the roadway here. And the vertical distance, again, to the road varies from about 100 feet to over 220 feet to the road. Now, the homes themselves are going to be located back here, so they'll be even further distance, but just to sort of orient folks and to understand the relationship. The homes here, I think if, if you've been into this neighborhood, one of the features of the homes in, in Hitching Post is some of them are actually quite high. So they're going to look out over and continue to be able to look out over this neighborhood rather than into the neighborhood. We, prior to this hearing tonight, we met with the residents of the Hitching Post neighborhood and reviewed this plan with them. We also met with the residents of Five Lanterns down here and we met with the board of the Greens condominium association to review the plan and to answer questions that they had at the time. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Okay, thank you. First, we always go to public comment first before we bring it back to the board unless a board member wants to make an initial comment. And hopefully it will be short before we go to the public comment.
Just to understand the open space you mentioned, will that be deeded open space?
So there'll be, there will be a recorded open space covenant and it will be, yes, it'll be, in that sense, protected.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody here this evening in the audience and inside this room wishing to speak on this presentation at all? One more time, anybody in the room wishing to speak? See no one? Is there anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? Okay, now we'll bring it back to the board. Ms. Keen?
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation, Ms. Sedaris. I'm very familiar with the area. I have really no specific questions except will there be fill removed and then replaced to make sure that things are leveled out appropriately? There's a lot of work that goes down and I kind of hear it from my house, so I was just wondering how that's going to happen.
So in this particular location, the, there will be some fill remove or some ground, dirt removed from the, to build the roadway, but it's actually going to be left on-site and used to balance out the building sites where the homes are going to be located.
Okay. I really have no further questions except how big of a home are you going to be building on each of those sites? What square footage?
So the, the, these homes range around 22, 2300, 2400 square feet.
Two-story.
Two-story, yeah.
There any walkouts?
These will actually, they, they all have the potential to be walkouts.
They do because of the, and I, I just, for, for my ease of reading these diagrams, could, could you ask that the directional, the north arrow be put on, on the, because it's so much easier for us to take a look and they're not on any of them.
Actually, this is the north arrow here.
I don't see it on my.
Oh, okay. It is on the plan. It's right above the title block on the right-hand corner.
So that, that is the north arrow, that little?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm just used to a north arrow that actually looks like a north arrow and says north on it.
We can certainly.
Can you put, put northeast or whatever, whichever way the arrow is going for me, will you?
Sure, we can do that.
But that doesn't, doesn't, it's not a traditional north arrow that I could recognize and I've read so many plans over the years, so I guess it's the new way I'll look out for it the next time.
Okay.
It just does make it much easier for me.
Sure, understood.
Thank you. All right, no further questions.
Kyle, please.
I have no questions at this time.
David? No?
I already asked my question.
Okay, couldn't wait. Nope. And I have no questions. I reviewed the plans. As long as you follow the plans and do what's in here in this presentation, I'm fine with it, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I will move approval of the proposed B437 layout Flagstone divide to create seven lots.
Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that would be 4-0 with one, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a continued public hearing. And we also have reseating of Ms. Keen to the case based on the Mullins Rule, which allows a member who wasn't, missed one meeting to re-review all the documents, including the videos and the tapes, which she has done. So she is now reseated back on this particular VOSD case, which is continued from November 29th. So seated on this currently are Mr. Ball, Mr. Darlinson, Mr. Peck, Ms. Keen and myself, Mr. Grandy. So we have a continuance. Is someone here to present?
Good evening. Mark Casey from Sashir Survey Consultants. Hope everybody had a great holiday. Our original proposal was to keep the existing house, build a new single-family house and a duplex. We also had our entrance coming off Coles Lane across an easement of property that's now owned by BID Plymouth. There was concerns because they're using that easement actually for parking, so to be a good neighbor, my, my client said, okay, we'll move the entrance. We tried to respond to the concerns about density. My client said, let's drop the number of new units. So instead of a total of three. So instead of a total of three new units, there's only two. So that's a pretty significant drop for a project that's only proposing three new units to, to begin with. In front of you is a blow-up of sheet one shaded in green. You can see the open space. You can see the rec, the big rectangle is the development area. And you, you, you could actually give us some relief from the 30-foot setback to the front. That would mean we could actually pull the two-family unit further away from the rear property line. We also have another plan that's a, shows a proposed sighting of the two-family and proposed landscaping as an example. Yes.
Yeah?
If we're not to be approved, we would come back with a two-lot subdivision. So we prepared a plan just to prove to ourselves and to you folks that we could comply with all the requirements of the subdivision rules and regulations and create a two-lot subdivision. Both those lots would be in excess of 30,000 square feet. That would give the applicant the choice of doing two large, single-family homes, a large, single-family home on one lot, a duplex on the other lot, or two-family on both lots since they're both over 30,000 square feet. That's, that's not what we want to do. There would be no open space. There would be, obviously, you can tell by the length of the road layout and the cul-de-sac, there's going to be an immense increase in impervious surface. So anyways, we just wanted to be able to let you visually take a look at that so you can see the difference. Say again?
Yeah, for, um, one thing, we're trying to ensure the program taking.
This one. Everybody wants to know the Celtics won 127 to 120 in overtime? If anybody wants to know. Since I quickly viewed while we're looking for plans on here. Didn't? No?
Well, we have, we have it on our screen.
We have it.
And we have it.
It's already, it's already 10:00 PM, so we really want to move forward here with, with your presentation, please.
Understand. So again, in any event, we've, you know, we've solved the concern about BID's parking space in our easement. We believe we've addressed concerns about density. We're just proposing the existing house and the multifamily, the two-family. And as far as, there's some comments from the, from engineering, we have no problem responding to in meeting their, you know, taking care of those comments. There's nothing drastic there. If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Now, Rob, you remind me, did we close the public comment last time? Before we continued? Was the public comment closed last time or was it left open? I'll say we'll leave it open.
Well, I just reviewed the film, and you did not close it.
Okay. We didn't close it. So I asked staff, they didn't know. All right? We just reviewed it.
Well, I just reviewed the film.
I wanted to double-check it. Thank you. Wanted to ensure. Anybody here in the audience wants to speak? Yes, please. Come to the microphone. Remember, three minutes.
My name is Ann Sullivan, and along with my husband, Richard. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
I think so. We are butters to the 15 Coles Lane property, currently under review for a VOSD special permit. We're grateful to all of you for taking the time to, to view the development site from our property and backyard. And before moving forward, we just ask that you address a few questions and concerns. While we agree that a VOSD permitting is likely a better, would provide a better outcome than a subdivision for both the butters and the town, we suggest that the buffer zone be enlarged and natural screening such as tall arborities be installed to mitigate the loss of privacy that we will most likely endure. The proposed large two-family, two-story dwelling will be situated on a hill, I guess you don't have, above four existing, single-family homes. So we request that it be reduced in size and/or moved further away from our yards to lessen the impact of noise, lighting, and loss of privacy to all of us. We suggest that the temporary fencing around the intended undisturbed areas be installed to prevent unnecessary removal of trees that should be left standing. And in addition, we ask that any fallen trees on the property be removed from the buffer zone and open space areas. If permanent fencing is to be installed, we ask that it be constructed on the inside of the buffer zone with evergreens planted outside the fence. In accordance with dark sky bylaws of the town, we ask that the developer pay particular attention to lighting, the type and amount of lighting installed in both the driveway and on the dwelling to minimize the impact on neighbors. And under the VOSD bylaw, specific objectives include permanently preserved natural areas. If the two-family building is intended as a rental property, we ask if any measures will be taken to ensure that the designated open space and buffer zones are properly maintained and kept free from dumping of yard and/or other household debris. Thank you again for your consideration and time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room this evening wishing to speak? See no one? Is there anybody on Zoom? Still on Zoom? There we go. No one? Okay. I will bring it back to the board. I would suggest closing the public comment before we move forward.
I move that we close public comment.
Second. We have a motion to close the public comment. We have a second. All in favor, raise your hand. The public comment is now closed. We will bring it back to the board. Mr. Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You started with a statement that said you needed some relief from us in order to move the duplex further away from the property line. What relief do you need? Because that's not something that's obviously presented to us right now, and that's certainly a concern that I know a number of board members have.
I, I'm, I'm offering that as a suggestion. Currently, it's from the front of the proposed new structures to the front of the developable areas, a 30-foot setback. If you were to make that 15 feet, that would mean we could pull the new two-family closer to the front setback of the developable area and thereby move it further away from the rear property line.
Fine. May, staff, can you, can, can you explain how, from a VOSD standpoint, we need to address that?
Yes. So in creating this plan, they're going to be creating an A and R plan that creates two development parcels for where the existing house is and where the proposed two-family is. And then the open space parcels, there are two separate parcels that will be separated, and they will be on their own parcels so that they can be in a preservation, and they can be restricted and, and not be owned by the owners of the, the unit, so that they'll be better preserved or have more requirements. So what Mark is asking is the development parcel that they're creating for the two-family, they have a 30-foot front setback requirement in the development pad, pod for that, that zone. If we reduce and give them a waiver to shift the building closer to the front of that development parcel that they're creating, then he can move the building forward, further away from the rear setback, rear boundary. He'd have to make the plan work and the driveways and the turnaround and everything work, so he hasn't shown us that, but he's proposing if that's something that they could, we could give him as a waiver for a front setback, then he could shift the building. It's kind of a.
So is this something we would need to see beforehand? Before a decision is made?
You would be able to need to see it and make sure it would work, because the driveway still has to be able to go up and work. I mean, I don't know if you've done anything to look at that yet.
No, no, we haven't. I'm just, I'm, I'm offering that as an idea, that's all. And it is, as far as the open space area and making sure that that's sacrosanct, we went to the extent of having condo docs drawn up in my instructions to the attorney to make a bulletproof that the open space area remains open space.
Except for.
It's not going to be disturbed. And there's going to be, if it were to happen, there would be consequences.
Well, I appreciate that because that's obviously a concern to the neighbors in the area. But the other issue that was raised, and an understandable one, is that given, as the president mentioned, all of us went at various times to visit the site, we recognize that there is a steep hill that this new structure would be at the top of and would then be looking down on neighbors coming back off of O'bury Street. It's the nature of topography. That's what it is. We'd certainly like to minimize that if at all possible. If the suggestion has been made that it is possible with some additional relief by moving this 15 feet, that's something that at least I personally would like to examine, because I think that that would be a benefit to the project and to the neighborhood. It's obviously not going to change the open space. It's merely reconfiguration. So I'm sort of at a loss because I, I'm not prepared to, I don't know if I can vote on something that's not actually before us.
It's not.
So I, I guess the question is, Mr. Chair, and I ask is, is, do I make a motion that we?
Continue.
Continue to allow the proponents to present a plan with that 15-foot request?
Uh, is the proponent, are you okay with going with a continuance so that you can show the extra 15 feet away from the other houses with a waiver?
What, what I would prefer is that you make it a condition of approval. And as that, as it would be a condition of approval, it would have to go in front of engineering as well, so.
Well, I don't want to make a vote unconditional on something that engineering might deny. Robin?
Yeah. So the, the engineering comments have not yet been incorporated to the, into the plans. He was waiting to see if he got approval first, but now he's suggesting another option, so engineering would have to look at it again, too, I would believe, because if it's shifting it forward.
Well, if engineering's saying 15 feet doesn't give you enough.
I don't, right. I don't, right. We don't know what the.
Then it might be, it might be 18. It might be 20. It might be 22 if it works with engineering. So it's something that absolutely needs to be re-reviewed.
The driveways have to work, the driveways have to work, too, and the turnaround, too.
I understand, yes. But it's something I would want to see on a plan. I wouldn't want to vote to make a continuance.
The changes are going to be, it's not going to be anything of a major change, okay? We can make this work. If you're not comfortable doing it unless we do a continuous and you get eyes on, so be it. It's fine. We'll continue.
I, I, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt. Please.
I, I wanted to understand what the notion was. Was it to, to change the 30 feet in the back to 15, you know, or something?
Forty-five.
But are you adding what, you know, to the front? Are you still having a?
If, if I come 15 foot closer to the front of the developable area.
Sliding the whole development 15 feet?
No, no. Just the structures themselves, instead of being set back 30 feet from the front of the development area, they would be set back 15 feet from the front of the development area.
Or 20, whatever the engineering says.
He's trying to create a larger setback from the rear property to the structures to help the neighbors.
Okay. And to have a shorter, they're moving the structure back, but not the?
Forward.
Forward. Forward. Forward. I'm calling it downhill, whatever. Where you're adding distance, because right now, what you've drawn, which by the way, to the Sullivans, has a line of trees that, that's been added on drawings dated December 19th. So they've added a line of trees, which you may not have been aware of. But anyway, right now, the face of the building, I, I measure is 46 to 48 feet back, the way you have it drawn, from the property line.
Currently.
Correct.
Currently.
Would you mean, would you mean you're proposing to move it from, if it's 48 feet, back to?
Add 15 feet to the rear property line.
So 63 feet back from the property line.
Correct.
Because that also would allow, besides leaving the, the line of trees, preserving more of the existing trees, you know, that we would put marks on, you know, undisturbed, you know, leave existing trees in place, in addition to adding a line at the end, the back line of the development parcel. So, so I just wanted to hear what you're doing. The other thought I had, and maybe Steve mentioned, is if you lowered the floor plan or the floor elevation by a foot or two, so, you know, you'd also, the, the mass of the house would be not only further away, but down a couple feet in terms of visibility from the neighbors.
And the, the plan, excuse?
But, but you're allowed to move fill if it's, if it's part of.
Listen, we're not in the business of designing where your house goes and if, what elevation it's set at. So if you would like to, for the continuance to help the neighbors, because they're looking for a little bit more of a setback from the hill from the homes being built, if that's allowed by the engineering department, which we don't know. It may not even be 15. Like I said, it may be, I'll let you, you can do 10 and make it work for the driveway.
Mr. Chair, at this point, I'd just like to move it forward. I will make a motion to continue this, to allow the proponent to present to engineering a plan to move the proposed new structure further away from the rear property line and to come back to us with the distance that is both comfortable for the proponent and for the engineering department.
Can I add to that? Since we discussed it and it was brought up, that you have on those plans a proposed fence with the evergreens facing downhill to O'bury Street. I'd like just to see what that would look like on the plan, because it was brought up today.
Well, I guess the question is, if there's a fence. That was the.
There's no fence drawn.
I understand, but it was something I'd like to see drawn. If they're going to come back and move it, they might as well draw it.
If you want to do that as a favor to the, to the boards, or one of the board members could see something along those lines, you certainly can do that.
Just so I'm clear, you're talking about a fence in the rear of the development area?
Correct.
A hypothetical fence.
And, and just, let's take it a step further. Are we talking split rail, stockade? I think split rail would probably be more appropriate.
Something that you can use for screening, particularly for noise, light, anything thrown, garbage out by, you know, things roll downhill, put it that way.
Okay. We have a motion for a continuance to, what would the date be if we continued?
It would be February 14th. We have January 24th, but we have a very full agenda already.
February 14th. Look what time it is now. We're on a full agenda. Like to get out at a decent time versus eleven or twelve.
February fourteenth at seven oh five.
So, we have a motion to continue to February fourteenth. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous, continued, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBAA case four one one two, Sheridan Home Builders, three ninety-three Court Street. Special permit required per section two oh five nine TC and use table to allow a multifamily dwelling per section two oh seven dash seven dot C dot one dot A for inclusionary housing per section two oh three dash seven dot C dot two for a driveway within fifty feet of an abutters driveway per section two oh two dash six A to waive or modify dimensional and similar requirements if required, and per section two oh five dash nine TC and dimensional table to waive rear setback requirements for a structure. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Tired.
Me, too. Me, too. So, Kevin Flaherty from Flaherty and Stefani, representing Matt Sheridan of Sheridan Home Builders. We have a PowerPoint that's coming up. So, this property is three ninety-three Court Street. It's, originally was three ninety-three and a half. I think it's been through the boards for the last twenty years with different approvals here and there. So, if we just go through as quick as we can, we're looking for a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals for the special permit with waivers requested, as mentioned. So, let me go through. So, again, Kevin Flaherty, we had Jeffrey Dirk from Vanasen Associates do a kind of a traffic assessment with site triangles and site distance for us as a part of kind of the initial phase of the project. Matt Sheridan is hopefully to be the developer of the project. As you can see right here quickly, this is kind of just the location of the site. Back in this corner over here, this is Harbor Walk and Cordage, this is Cordage Park in here. This is, there's a building here, there's a new commercial building up front here, and our frontage really is almost opposite from Forest Ave. And we're right north of Spooner Pond down here as well, just to kind of give you an idea where we are. So, history of the project, to not go too deep into it, there was a single-family house on the property. It was, had extensive fire damage and went through the entire building department with demo permits and everything else like that back in nineteen ninety-three. There's, based off Robin's findings and other things like that, I think there's been four or five different approvals and approvals going through the process with different, you know, concepts and different ideas for what can be done on the property. It is done in, it is in a TC zone, which allows some flexibility with what can be permitted, which allowed for them to kind of go forward. The latest permitting was done in two thousand eight. It was an approval of a three residential building, two duplexes, and a single-family home. There was fifteen total bedrooms, three bedrooms per unit in that development, as you can see right here. They didn't activate the special permit, nobody moved forward with it. I think there were some outstanding engineering comments, and, you know, from a practical standpoint, would have been a very difficult project to construct, based off how it was done. You know, meeting today's standards, they only had an eighteen-foot driveway and so forth. So, moving on, Mr. Sheridan is proposing a multifamily building, which is allowed through a special permit use in this TC zone, which would have, it's three stories, and it would also have a walkout. We're not asking for any sort of waiver, some height requirements. We've worked that out to make sure the roof was the right pitch and everything else from that standpoint. In each, it would be six market units and one inclusionary unit that would be built in the structure. Every unit in the building would be two bedrooms, and we would have, we have two spaces per unit per the zoning bylaw and the requirements. So, as mentioned before, these are the special permits that we're requesting. Again, it's allowed use per special permit in the TC zone. You know, most of the other ones are kind of based off, you know, the tight vicinity of all the neighboring properties and so forth, the less than fifty feet to an abutters driveway, just because of the area we're in. And also, the other one that was, really comes into play was the rear yard setback, which we're asking a reduction from thirty feet to twelve point one. The previous approval had a setback waived down to fifteen feet. We're asking for twelve point one to a deck, where they had fifteen feet to a, the structure, which was kind of that close to the property line. So, again, I think Matt and I have looked at this property five years ago, when he was more into building, you know, duplexes and things like that. Based off his past history in the last few years, he's been more comfortable with doing a multifamily building. He has the Ocean Walk property that he built, and the six eighty-seven State Road property that he's under construction with right now, that have been kind of going better than expected. If you drive by the properties, it's, they look great. So, this is kind of the elevations. So, up here would be the front of the building. As you can see, there's three stories this way, with a flat roof that would run across. And then the back would be, you know, the walkout elevation down here that would have two units, and then kind of a deck system that would be the access to, you know, the second and third floor, which is a kind of combined unit. The building will be sprinkled as it's per code. So, there'll be, going back to the slide real quick, there will be two units in the basement, two in a mechanical room for the sprinkler room and whatnot, two units for the first floor, and then the second and third floor will be, there'll be three units, there'll be a two-story unit for each one. We have a, proposing a twenty-four-foot wide driveway, which the fire department has approved. We've made sure that, you know, I'll go down to the site plan for a second so we can see it. I skipped it. So, as you can see, part of the problem with the other design was that there was no way for a fire truck, a delivery truck, or anything like that to turn around. So, part of our kind of initial phase was to make sure that was going to be met, and we kind of designed it to make sure that we had our parking spaces, and that the fire department was going to be in support of the project. The other concern we had was the, I might be jumping around a little bit, but, the other concern we had was the traffic. And the traffic with the site distance and how close the buildings are to the street and everything else like that. So, before we even got started, we made sure we hired Vanas to kind of go through and walk us through from their standpoint to make sure that something like this was feasible. They saw, you know, I had a conversation with Jeffrey Dirk, and he saw no issues with it, so he had his kind of guys go out there to do their studies, to check the speed limit, and they came up with a conclusion that the site had more than enough access using this three-stage approach, that they use in kind of downtown urban areas. So, the three-stage approach would be that you would stop before the sidewalk, you'd kind of see if anybody was coming, bicyclists, pedestrian, anybody like that, then you would creep out to the sidewalk, just like anybody has driving downtown, kind of to ease their way out, to be able to see traffic, and then be able to go from there. They saw no issues at all with basically this, this model. The DPW wanted us to come back and make sure we put this in place, so our revised plan showed a stop bar and a stop sign to make sure that people would stop before that sidewalk to kind of make sure they'd follow these guidelines going forward from a safety standpoint. We didn't want to be the ones owning it, so we wanted to make sure, you know, they were okay with it to give our stamp. The, the building's going to be serviced by town sewer, town water. All the stormwater is going to be retained on site. We have catch basins and a water quality unit with some, with an, a subsurface infiltration system that kind of runs the whole thing. There's no room to do natural drainage or anything along those lines, so that's kind of, you know, the ideal situation. And engineering has been okay with that. We've adjusted a couple things to make sure that there's no issues out back. Fire department wanted a hydrant within a hundred feet of the sprinkler connection, so we've added that. So, go through this quickly. This is the existing conditions. It was, again, there was a single-family house, all it's kind of overgrown right now with brush and whatnot. This is our landscaping plan. A lot of the landscaping and the design was based off trying to pull everything away from the abutting properties. This property to the south has buildings that are very close to the property line. We've adjusted the road to make sure we stayed as far away as we could from that side, kind of different than what was before. As you can see, it really doesn't work well with the three duplex system that was there before, due to kind of narrowness of the lot before it widens out here. I don't think that's getting pretty close to it. Again, like I said, two spaces per each lot. We, part of the process early on, we went through the North Plymouth Steering Committee, just to make sure that the neighborhood was going to be okay with the design, okay with the location. We were able to get a unanimous decision that they were in support of it and in favor of the project. But it uses, and I think we'll be happy to answer any comments from there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody in here like to speak on this particular presentation? I don't see anybody, so anybody on Zoom? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. David?
Why do you know I'll always have some comments? In no particular order, the roof drains on the front, you've got connected underground to your drainage system, on the back you don't. And the architectural plans show, you know...
The downspouts.
Downspouts and flowing onto the...
I thought you might spot that. I saw that on the architectural plans when I was looking at them. So, Matt and I had a conversation, and due to the limited space out back, we had a conversation about making sure we could run those gutters to everything come out the front, since it is a flat roof and a rubber membrane. He thought there'd be no issues to run all the water out front, to make sure we kind of reduced any sort of, because again, when you're working with that small of an area out back, we really wanted to keep all the runoff to the front where our major system was. So, he thought no issue with that at all.
Okay. I'd like, you've got snow storage shown in multiple locations. They anticipated that question, but nothing with bikes, you know, if there's a place to park a couple bikes on the site, would like, like to see that.
I think the applicant would be, I think he'd be fine with that. And we also made sure that the snow storage didn't conflict with the landscaping as well.
Yeah, or the drainage, no, that looked fine. You know, we'll always say, you know, if you can throw in an electric charger and, especially a flat roof.
These are only suggestions.
Yes.
They're not mandated.
And the, the biggest thing was, you know, these will be rentals, right? Rather than condos?
Yes.
Okay, the access to the top unit, you know, it's, you have to go down, down a level and then up two, you know, on the back stairs. So, I don't know if that will make them less, you know, harder to market, or whether you considered somehow protecting or just putting a canopy or something over the stairs, because I'm worried they're going to be wet, they're going to get icy, you know, that they might be both a maintenance and potentially even a safety issue, you know, going, you know, again, the nuisance of going down, but then going up two to get to the top three units. You know, I'm just asking your thinking, because they are open stairs facing the harbor.
Thank you for the suggestion, I'll certainly look into it. Putting a roof over the rear decks.
Over just the stairs.
Just a little overhang over the stairs, no problem.
Yeah, because, you know, I'm just worried about them icing up and stuff.
Very good concern.
Okay.
Thanks, Dave.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Kyle, anything? Sir?
I just want to make sure that you're asking for a special permit for the rear from, how many feet is that? I'm sorry?
So, from the rear yard setback in the TC zone, you need, the requirement is thirty feet. So, we're asking for, where the decks are in the back, we're asking for twelve point one feet from the deck corner to the rear property line. We think it's a better solution than what was previously approved, because, again, fifteen feet from a foundation wall to that rear property line is difficult, and we wanted to make sure that out front, as you can see where it widens out, that we had our correct parking.
And you spoke to the, I mean, you really don't have, I don't have, I don't see an issue with it, with the fact that there's the road there, and then the next complex, the, which would be your abutters, I don't know if you spoke to them or not, but I currently still don't see any issue with that particular request.
Thank you. Part of it, too, is we made sure that on that back line, that we did a pretty good wall of screening for anything sort of, you know, for visibility from the, because the parking lot down below is about maybe fourteen or fifteen feet lower, this tiered retaining walls, so we really made sure we tried to buffer that from. Again, it's just a parking lot, but still.
All set, sir?
All set, sir.
Steve, please.
I have no comments, thank you.
Ms. Keane?
Thank you. So, I wanted to say that this is such an improvement in the neighborhood, it's going to make such a big difference, and there'll be rental units, and they won't look like the ones that are in Cordage Park, put it that way. It'll be more boutique, and I can just imagine it'll be well, it was, it will be well-accepted, just like the Plymouth Center Steering Committee had said. I want to thank you, Mr. Sheridan, for six eighty-seven State Street, because that has also been such an improvement in the neighborhood. So, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, I actually, Mr. Peck hadn't brought up any concerns that I had, so I, that's all my comments. Thank you for State Street, and thank you for the improvements.
No, it's my turn. Then I'll, then I'll go back to you. All right. Okay. What I see here is a vast improvement from, obviously, what is existing there currently. And I see augmenting some of the landscaping here, and is there, is a plant list, right? Schedule, I see it right here on the right, so there is a plant list. Is there any grass? Is there grass? Right here? I know, I'm just saying, is there any?
Some grass. You know, there's, again, it's not, it's not a huge site, but it might be just faded. Anywhere you're not seeing a plant, that's, that's going to be your grasses along the sides of the...
Well, that's what I'm looking at, with the shrubs that are here, I'm thinking those areas along your landscape that here, I'm assuming that that's grass.
The light, the light green area on the plan, that's, that's grass.
Grass. Just double-checking. And I would also make the suggestion of looking into potentially any solar, possibly. Just, just a suggestion, along with the bike racks that Mr. Peck had brought up. What else, what else do you have, Dave, please?
Well, you know, solar and EV, but the, the other sort of suggestion, not a mandate, is that nineteen ninety-three house was actually one of the oldest houses in Plymouth. So, that site was the home of William Crow, built in sixteen sixty-four, and then it became John Cotton House in seventeen twenty-eight, and then it became a tenement, just completely rundown, had the fire, was, so, just a suggestion, you know, that, you know, a archaeological, you know, survey might be useful, whether you go to Plymouth Pituxet or, you know, some archaeologists, it just, there may be all kind of interesting stuff from the sixteen hundreds on the site. Again, it's, it's kind of a suggestion. I was unable to, you know, talk to Plymouth Pituxet or something, but it's, that site, the ground has, you know, a lot of history. It was originally, actually, before it became William Crow, the Billington land, so...
History lesson.
History lesson for everybody, and so, there may be some history in the ground, can't mandate it, but suggest, before you start construction, an archaeological survey.
Suggestion.
Suggestion.
Okay.
Maybe the CDC will pay for it under their administration.
Okay, so, with that, I'll entertain a motion from the board, or if there are any other questions?
I would, I would be glad to move approval of case four one one two, with one or two of the additional...
Suggestions.
...suggestions noted in the conditions.
Robin, you have them?
To encourage bike storage, EV charging station, roof solar, canopy over the rear stairs... stairs, and a archaeological survey.
Based on the history that maybe David could send over to the planning staff, so they could have on a record for that piece of property for why we even asked that question, or suggest that to the developer. Okay?
Second.
So, we got, we got a motion, we got a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Unanimous. Good luck getting the zoning board of appeals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other business to come before the planning board this evening?
Um, just a reminder, I'll be away next, uh, next meeting, the 24th.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.